Oh, no.
She said, yeah.
Kendra's direct connect, it's why she was a group.
Oh, well, that doesn't help me.
I'm sorry.
So everyone knows the internet except Mark.
Do we have to share? That's all. No big deal.
Should I call the meeting to order?
People.
We ready, guys?
Use me being there. Olivia said it right now. I really am.
All right, I'm calling it to order. Please stand for flag allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to everyone who live for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those affected by the Minnesota school shooting. I've been made aware that the flag outside was not lowered during the time ordered by the President of the United States. This was an unfortunate oversight, so on behalf of the town employees and our council, I just want to say our hearts and thoughts are with those impacted. Thank you.
I forgot my shirt needs.
All right. On to appointments and resignations, discussion and consideration of Caitlin Kresler's resignation as summer camp director. I have a motion to accept. Go ahead.
Yeah, motion to accept the resignation of Caitlin Kresler's from the summer camp director with regret.
Second.
So we have a motion, our second, any council discussion? I will go for a roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madneff.
Yes.
Homashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox. Yes. Um, onto the consent agenda. We only have two items here. Um, I did want to comment on the minutes that um, when we go into executive session, we should put in the minutes that the person who is being discussed was notified in advance, and that wasn't included, so I just want to make sure it is. Anybody else have anything they'd like to add to the minutes? Or go ahead. Oh.
No, it's not Wi-Fi working, so.
Oh, good. He has Wi-Fi.
Yeah, Madam Chair did have three minor uh, items. So in the minutes on page two, um, Jeremy Nestle's name is spelled incorrectly. It's called Nestley, but it should be N O E S S E L on page two. On page five, there is an incompletion in the motion for the road application. Um, so fourth line down, it says, um, it says, as discussed, and says, projects listed with authorization for town solicitor and town representatives, et cetera. I don't really know what it's supposed to say on the fourth line there. Not have a chance to go back and read the transcript or watch the video. I don't know if take a look at that and correct it. And then on page six, I noticed another incorrect spelling on H. Schimmel's name, missing the C. Those are the only minor substantive things that I found.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to add? Sure, go ahead, Aaron.
Clarity. So on the August nineteenth, who made the statement that the applicants were notified? Because I think we can add it to this record, but not sure that that was would be an accurate reflection of the minutes.
Okay, I just thought it had to be reflected in the minutes.
It does need to be, but, you know, I don't know that it was.
I don't know if we did.
I made a motion and did not announce it. It was an oversight.
But we can definitely include it this, that a minute. But I don't know that we can amend that because it wasn't stated. But I'll double check the town solicitor. I'm the best way to handle that. So we're covered on both sides.
Sure.
Oh.
Yeah, no. Um, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So I'll make a motion to approve the August nineteenth minutes with amendments.
Second.
So we have a motion, our second, we'll go for our
Discussion?
Sure, discussion on the minute.
Yeah, just a, just a point. I mean, I think Kendra is taking the minutes now, and she's doing a great job. She's new to it. Is some of these minor clerical things, is it possible that we could provide that to her in advance, just so that we don't have to cover that here?
If I don't read the minutes as the last thing I do before the meeting, yes.
Okay.
But admittedly, I did it right before the meeting.
No, you're, you're very good. You review everything. It's just oftentimes there's spelling mistakes or grammatic, and I think it would make it easier for her just to get that done before.
I mean, not to, not to be in some, but it's one of the last things I do.
No, it's fine. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I think it depends on the substance, because if it's something of substance, we'd want to discuss it as the council, whether or not it gets inserted. We wouldn't want anything, but if it's just a name or a typo, um, I'm okay with that. We'll go for a roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madneff.
Yes.
Homashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox. Yes. All right, can I have a motion to approve consent item two?
So moved.
Second.
Right, so we have a motion, our second, any discussion on this one? All right, we'll go for a vote. Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Madneff.
Yes.
Homashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Wilcox. Yes. All right, on to public forum. The purpose of public forum is to give members of the public an opportunity to address the town council about items not on the agenda. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. You'll have one opportunity to address the town council during public forum. Is that a courtesy for others who wish to speak to ensure we have equal time for all? There will be a timer which will go off when your three minutes are up, so you know to finish. If you need more time, we welcome you to submit your comments in writing um, to the town clerk, so it can be included as a part of the record in the communications section of the agenda. All comments should be directed to the president and not any other person present. Do we have anybody here who'd like to speak? Uh, Shaw, so Andy hand, and then Louise's hand. Please, uh, please state your name for the record.
Okay, um, Andrew Cotter. Um, I have, I guess it's from last, uh, I wasn't at the last meeting, but in the reports, um, there's discussion of restructuring, building, zoning and planning. Um, I just wondered what if that that's, um, the meeting minutes haven't been uh, weren't posted yet, were they, or?
They were just approved this evening.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I was wondering what, uh, that is, uh, gonna entail? The, um, restructuring of the whole department or?
Um, yeah, I'm just gonna pause your timer, I guess. We restructured, um, the department so that way our zoning official was overseeing a, a few different areas. There was a, a chart that was included that I found was really helpful. Um, I can see a more direction and focus.
Okay.
It was really just the discussion, so he's gonna help with the personnel, um, questions, concerns, time off, things like that for the clerk of building and zoning.
Okay, this one then, okay, the next question, I guess, is regarding something that is on the agenda now, so that wouldn't.
Yeah, we should wait till we get there.
Wait till you get there. So I have to wait till next meeting to ask about it.
You can ask tonight when we talk about it as well.
Okay, oh, what's the procedure?
Usually council has the discussion, and then we, if the public has something, somebody will raise their hand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking. Yep.
Good evening, councilors. Uh, I'm Louise Dinsmore from Richmond. Um, as the Chair of the Charahoe School Committee, I'm here tonight to inform you and the Richmond residents about a number of upcoming meetings that will be crucial in determining next steps relative to facilities planning for the elementary schools in our school district. Please know that I'm speaking for myself and not behalf, not on behalf of the entire school committee. By law, in twenty eighteen, school districts around Rhode Island were required to have an elementary's facilities plan as part of their five-year capital plan. Charahoe has not had a comprehensive plan in many years, which makes this work that we are about to tackle quite urgent, and it is required by law. While our district has, always has a capital budget to receive reimbursement, the Rhode Island Department of Education must approve our five-year plan. I wanted to, um, come here tonight to make the community aware of an extended invitation to attend the next school committee meeting on Tuesday, September sixteenth at seven P M., which will be in the middle school auditorium. On the sixteenth, SLAM, which is the architectural firm the school committee engaged last month to help us with our elementary school plan, will make a presentation as part of this planning process. This is a critical step that positions Charahoe for state review and potential reimbursement for any future projects. On September sixteenth, SLAM will be presenting options that include renovations to the three existing elementary facilities, constructing one new elementary school, or constructing three new elementary schools. In deciding on a course of action, public input from everyone in our district, whether you have a child that is currently enrolled in our district or not, is imperative. I invite all of the voters, parents, taxpayers, staff, community, to attend the school committee meeting on September sixteenth. Following that meeting, there will be town hall style meetings, which will be taking place at each elementary school, designed to educate the public and engage the public on these various elementary school planning options. So if you can't attend on September sixteenth, you can attend another meeting to hear the presentation. The Richmond residents, um, just so you know, there will be a, another presentation at Richmond Elementary School scheduled for Monday, September twenty ninth at five thirty P M. That's Monday, September twenty ninth at five thirty P M. At the school committee's October meeting, we must identify as a committee which option to pursue. That option will be put into what is called a stage two application to the Rhode Island Department of Education, which will hopefully be submitted in February. I just want to stress, this is a crucial time for our community to listen and hear the presentations coming up by SLAM. We need your feedback, and I hope the members of our community can attend our meeting on the nineteenth, and again, at Richmond Elementary School on the twenty ninth.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sixteen, not nineteen, right? Sixteen?
I'm sorry. The, um,
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Yeah.
Yep, and then, yes, and then one other question.
Does bring us to the three minutes.
Okay, I just have, just ten more seconds if you don't.
All right.
In the spirit of collaboration, I was just gonna ask the town if they would advertise these meetings coming up on the website for the town and on the Facebook page for maximum exposure. I want to make sure that all members of the community, whether you have a student in the district or not, are aware of these upcoming meetings. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I have Jim's hand on yours.
Sorry, I just want to make sure, um, that meeting will be recorded, but we have a council meeting, I believe, on that night too, so well, obviously, the council members, if we don't get out in time, will be able to watch the recording.
We will. That's correct. Go ahead, Aaron.
Thank you.
Um, I haven't received any notification about these meetings, and I'm not seeing it on the website.
You will.
Will the school district be?
Yes. Gina Fard and I, yeah, talked about it last week.
Yeah.
You'll be getting something.
Send over something just so we can post it, because that is in time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Sure, go ahead, Mr. Parker. We have anybody online? We do? Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. Gary Parker, Richmond. Uh, just on, uh, on behalf of some of the work we've been doing for the Economic Development Commission just over the past couple of weeks, just wanted to give you a little bit of back brief and some, uh, some kind of good news. I'd say we could, uh, we could contribute.
Do you, do you want to save that for your report later?
Oh, actually, ma'am, that, that, that part of the report is actually just going to be for the, uh, for the ocean community.
Okay, my stuff.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, no, this is, this is actually some separate stuff. Um, through the, through the power of serendipity and meeting people, um, actually was placed in contact with the Shannick Memorial Hall Association, which is, uh, run by some very interesting archivists and, uh, clever historians, part of the Richmond Historical, uh, Society, kind of a collective group. But down in Shannick, um, they, they took me down there a couple of weeks, two weeks ago, went down to visit some archives that are just absolutely remarkable, and I actually find, I, I believe in my assessment, will have, uh, from an EDC perspective, some economic benefit to bring some, basically, some, some interest into the village of Shannick. I mean, it's, it's quite powerful stuff. Um, they eventually are going to bounce some other ideas off the EDC, and then those will be forward to the town council, uh, because they have some requests that regarding public land. But anyway, that's, uh, that's pretty much that. Um, as well as one of the developers down there who's, uh, who's been doing brownfield remediation and their wonderful, um, restaurant, there's a restaurant there's possibly gonna start there quite soon. Great work, and so there, I guess what I'm saying, there's a lot of actually dynamic activity going on in Shannick, um, to which I can take, no, the EDC could take zero credit, of course, not that we ever would, but at least we'll just let you know that this is happening, and we're gonna facilitate their efforts as much as we possibly can. Um, again, I, I mentioned that it was kind of a, it was kind of a serendipitous meeting with, uh, with those folks. I just wanted to put a pitch out for collaboration and cooperation between the boards and the commissions. Um, one of the things that I know that with wellness, and not just commissions and boards, but staff as well, speaking with, uh, you know, with, uh, human services, wellness, EDC, Richmond, uh, the task force, just basically trying to meet each other in the middle so we can share information. Um, which brings me to kind of another point I just want to bring to your awareness. Uh, regarding the planning board, we have some, I would say you, there are black letter law requirements from the EDC perspective to, to kind of weigh in on some of the zoning issues, zoning changes, zoning, established zoning. Um, we're gonna work with planning board, see how we can get to that earlier and faster. That way, when things come to the council, they've been vetted, uh, with a little bit, a couple of more sets of eyes. Not necessarily that we can, that we can do anything better, greater, but it's a different set of eyes with a different economic analysis. And that's pretty much a black letter for us. That gets to the attract businesses part. We can't attract businesses, you know, attract business, it's, it's in, it's in the ordinance for us to attract business. It doesn't mean repel business. Repelling business is when we change, when we change things, uh, as I would say, frankly, willy-nilly. Um, and we want to make sure that we, uh, we stay away from those, uh, those third rails. And thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Uh, any questions for me?
No, we'll hear from you soon again. Did I have anybody yet in person before I go online? All right, we'll go online.
These are Dave, Lucy, and Stephanie. You should have permissions.
Remember to please state your name for the record.
Yeah, this is Dave Bengson from Wyoming. Um, I just want to let the community know that on September seventeenth at seven o'clock at the Richmond Fire Station, there is going to be a healthcare forum held to, um, allow the people of Richmond to ask questions of some very well-regarded healthcare professionals. Um, healthcare is a huge topic in the town, the state, the country. Um, and we have a, we've assembled a panel of excellent, uh, representatives. One is, uh, Dr. Michael Fine, who is a former director of the Rhode Island Department of Health. One is, uh, our own Ms. Allison Croak, the CEO of the Wood River Health Services. And the third one is, uh, Dr. Betty Ramber, who is a professor of nursing at U R I, but maybe more importantly, she is the vice chair of the Federal Medicare Payments Advisory Commission. So these people know a lot about healthcare, and, um, they would like to share their knowledge with us. Uh, the event is being organized by the Richmond Democratic Town Committee, but it is a intended to be a nonpartisan event, just to get information out to the, um, residents of Richmond and surrounding towns. So I just want everybody to be aware of that. Again, it's September seventeenth, a Wednesday, seven P M., Richmond, Carolina Fire Station on Route one twelve. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else online? Nope. All right. And seeing nobody else in person, we will go on to our reports. Get off with our interim town administrator report.
Good evening. Um, so the first thing I have is, um, guidance regarding the Rhode Island D E M Recreation Development Grant um, that was just released, and I provided kind of an extensive memo of where we're at. Unfortunately, we did not receive the second round for phase two of funding um, from the congressional appropriations, and that phase was applied for included pickleball courts, the site work, playground, playground resurfacing, and perimeter fencing, and the engineering. Um, so this is a different grant, and this is not congressional earmarked funding. This is through Rhode Island D E M. And so, um, and there's been kind of a lot of discussions about what type of outdoor recreation we would apply for. Um, it is my recommendation that we apply for something towards for Richmond, um, to continue building out that project. However, um, it might, if the council wishes, I'd like to receive any other feedback on initiatives for staff direction to research and/or if you want me to have it referred to the Recreation Commission, that is also an option, because this is, this application is due November eighteenth. So there is a little bit of time. Um, I can't believe it's already September, so I don't want to wait too much longer, but kind of looking for some council direction on what initiatives, um, this application would go for. Um, the grant instruction sheet does explain what can be, um, utilized. Um, there has been a lot of conversation in the community about the Richmond Elementary School. Unfortunately, that project is not eligible for this fund. It does not qualify, um, whatsoever, even if the town did sponsor it because of how the grounds are maintained, and I kind of do explain that, but just kind of looking for some guidance on what council would like to see utilized, and the fund amount, um, there's different, depending on how large of a scale and the match, that's very important also, is that we need to have a match for whatever we decide. Um, is kind of gonna shape the trajectory of this application. So just kind of looking for some feedback on what should we pursue.
Yeah, that sounds good. So anybody have any initial thoughts? Go ahead, Counselor Homashano.
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I would be in favor of, uh, really going for that amount to add to our next steps for number four, Richmond Townhouse Road. I also think with the opportunity for match, because there's gonna require grading and work done by our DPW, and I believe that would apply to a match done at that. So it's gonna just, um, as we've get phase one completed and be prepared and ready, and hopefully receive that funding for phase two, we'll be, uh, ready to go. So that would be my thought. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I echo those thoughts. Um, we've, Jim and I've put a lot of work into pushing that through, so I definitely want to see it happen, but I do open other, I'm open to other suggestions. Shaw, so Counselor Dinsmore, here?
So last meeting, we, uh, saw the diagram of kind of like what it was gonna look like, the plan. So the initial half a million was gonna pay for that to get all that done. So now, what this is, what we're looking for is a kind of the money for stage two.
Correct.
Right, okay. Yeah, I mean, I would try to go for the, um, because I know we missed out on a lot of stuff. It was like six hundred and some thousand dollars, so like choice two here, we answered up to half a million dollars. Um, but obviously, the match is a pretty decent amount too, so, um, I know there's still a lot of work to be done, so I don't know what, what you guys' thoughts are on which one of these three you guys were thinking about.
Any thoughts on this end?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dan.
Don't worry. Okay. So, um, a couple of things, just spanning on, um, what all three of you said. So I agree with, uh, with Jeff in going for one of the five hundred K larger grants. And one of the things to point out is, um, even though it requests, it requires a match, it can be in-kind,
Yep.
which is good. Um, so DPW, if they're doing some of the work, that'd be an in-kind match. We could also solicit, um, for potential, I, I don't know if there's any rules against donations to municipalities. Um, I'm not familiar with that. There could be in-kind donations in terms of materials there. Um, the other interesting thing is the award announcement is until spring twenty twenty-six. So let's assume that, uh, we are awarded a grant. There is time to discuss working into our budget and our capital improvement plan. So if we do need a monetary match, we can work that into to our expenses, um, and that's fiscal year. Um, one thing that I don't know how many people saw, but one of the requirements here is a D E M Recreation easement. And I could not find it on their website, so I'd like to request if our interim admin clerk, um, wouldn't mind reaching out to D E M and sending the council that easement. I'm really concerned about what could be in there, because it may limit what we can and cannot do in the future.
Mm-hmm.
So while the grant and getting the money is great, if there are stipulations that we can't abide by in the future for what we want to do on that property, then we might have to make a really tough decision one way or the other.
Mm-hmm. I have Counselor Reynolds.
I agree with, you know, with trying to continue with Richmond, uh, or Richmond Townhouse, certainly. Aaron, on this, I know this is, the cost numbers are old, um, just, I'm just trying to break out what was playground and surrounding surfaces, and what was pickleball?
Yeah.
The, so the, the site work, was that for pickleball?
It was, yeah.
All right, so basically, it's the playground, the playground surface. How about the perimeter fence?
So the perimeter fence was initially for the entire parcel, because if there's any thought of moving summer camp over there or anything, we do need it completely fenced. However, that would have to, the perimeter fence would have to accompany probably the playground for it to be an eligible competitive application. But the pickleball court, the hundred and sixty-five thousand plus the hundred and twenty-five thousand was the, um, the fencing, the court surface, the painting of the surface, as well as the site work to prepare that. So the one sixty-five, the one twenty-five, the perimeter fencing, um, to my knowledge, was the one thirty-eight corridor across from one twelve continued there. So depending on future work, the, the rear of the property was not fenced, so that was more one thirty-eight to one twelve for the main two phases.
Yeah. So I mean, I would say, at least my own opinion is focus on the slower level, I think, first, and maybe you, so, maybe, I don't know if you can And maybe, maybe, I don't know if you can submit more than one application to break it up between the two. I think adding, trying to put all of that into a grant is, might be biting off more, more than we can chew. The other, the other thought I had, and I don't know the answer, is I, I know we did some replacement up at Beaver River, but were there things up there that we wanted to do that we could put into one of the small grant applications? The only other thought I had, but other, other areas that might need and could use the money?
Yeah, that was one that came to me as well when we had discussed this. I just am, I'm disappointed we didn't get funds to go forward. You know, the, the community and us as a council, we've already expressed this point with not getting as much as we were hoping across the street. So I just feel like I would want to prioritize this. Because Beaver River Playground does have something right now, but that was definitely a thought that I had as well. And also, this is not, like, thi- this is not finalized. This is gonna come back to us. So whatever we kind of have a consensus on today, you will get updated numbers, updated information, it'll come back to us. So we'll be able to see further if it is more than we can chew. Because we still have to approve it before it gets submitted.
So we'll have estimates for whatever project that would come back. I don't think we would go out to bidding till it's closer to the project, because that would be part of the grant application, so we could have, you know, certainly more current numbers to come back. But just for some direction on what to research, on what items to apply for, and Mark brings up a good point. I don't know if we can have multiple applications, but certainly that's something, you know, I can reach out to see, because that might be an option too. And all, in regards to Beaver River, the most competitive of what I reviewed as part of their criteria plan is new recreation initiatives in the town. And so while I think Beaver River to replace some of those playground equipment would be great, I don't know if that would make us score a little lower, just because we already have a playground at that site. But that's certainly something that I can believe that out as well.
No, and I agree. I think we should try to do this, but you know, again, if if there was a, you know, a separate grant for a smaller amount of money for that, that's possible.
And then the other, I did say, you know, maybe refer to the Recreation Commission. They did kind of an informal survey winter. And I was not able to get it read off, unfortunately, prior to having this ready. But they had reached out to the community on what kind of recreation initiatives they wanted to see. So I don't, I mean, we do have some time. But they are also busy with the fall festival that's coming. So I don't want to take too much time and I'm not doing that. But if there was some other project that council was thinking, that might be appropriate as well to refer to them. But I think the consensus is to move forward with something at Fort Richmond in those general areas. Anything new at Fort Richmond that wasn't thought about?
All right, I got nobody. So, oh, sorry.
Question. These grants, is this yearly or is this a one-time thing?
This one, well, depends. So the Congressional earmarked is typically a yearly request. However, that's based on whatever federal funds are available. So I mean, I think everybody's guess this is good. We're gonna, if the state's gonna have any federal funds to give. As far as this recreation grant program, I'm not exactly sure how annual this is. Because they have different, DEM has a lot of different recreation ones, but they aren't all necessarily the same one. So this specific one, I'm unsure, but I can totally research that out more. But because they give out so many different grants, I believe that's why they have come up with this comprehensive scoring criteria, because they do have, they give out, you know, waterway grants and, and lots of different recreation grants. But this one specifically, I'm unsure. Part of the initial Phase One of Fort Richmond did include basketball. That was in the initial approval of the funding for, for Richmond. So pickleball was not part of the Congressional earmark. And so because of funding availability, certainly, we're moving through Fort Richmond's final, hopefully, HUD review. And we'll know more as that project and available funding, once we go out to bid for Phase One. But there wasn't the ability to change the earmark for that to pickleball. That became more kind of popular. So if there is money, we'll have to decide, can we do basketball and pickleball? Do we want to do more of a multi-use court that some municipality is due? And so when I say pickleball, it would also be besides the tennis court. So it wouldn't just be limited to pickleball. So it would be, you know, multi-use. But basketball was part of the first round, Phase One. Whether we have enough money once the septic, site work, engineering, and the pavilions installed, that is to be.
So I, I answered my own question. I don't want to have you go do the research. So they had grant awards in 2016, 2018, 2020, 2022, and 2024. Again, 20, so about every two years. And if you go on, on their website, they actually have a list of some of their some of the grants, and I just, just lost them. There's actually some interesting ones that might be worth seeing if, see how they, some of these towns submitted them, because there are things in here that, you know, renovation of basketball areas, parking benches, one of them in Lincoln here is new pickleball courts, fencing benches. That was only a $125,000 grant. So I, I know that was, that was last year, but hey, they got 100K for pickleball courts. Doesn't seem too far-fetched that we could get that as well for, and build out Fort Richmond Townhouse Road. Especially they got one here with splash pads and, and some appreciate this, a dog park.
I was going to mention that.
Eighty-eight playground. Yeah, there's some good stuff in here.
Yeah, we applied for this grant and we received it for the dog park. We also, the Heritage Trail, I believe, is funded in part by, made up the outdoor recreation, but the same overarching funding, but it was a trail grant. So the town has received this grant, and they do it every few years. I believe it's a ballot question. I believe that it's part of their overarching funding. So I'm excited to apply for one again. So I think that what we're gonna do is ask you to bring us back a completed application with going forward on Townhouse Road. If, I, I'll take your judgment, because I do like that. If we think we're biting off more than we can chew, or if we want to shift gears to Beaver River, I know it's not as competitive. I understand those concerns, but it may be good to at least have a draft. Actually, as I'm saying it out loud, I don't like that, because you are busy enough. So never mind. Unless another council, everything's we should. I think we should go forward just for Richmond Townhouse and expanding it into Phase Two. That's my opinion. But Jim, you had your hand up, so you can go ahead.
I was only to mention that the DEM grant, that was approved for the dog park.
Which you approved during your first term?
Yep. So, but yeah, I just.
Memory.
It's from the old driving ass, so. That's all.
I think, I think if, if there's time, so I, I want to maximize, because there's no guarantee that we're gonna have this in two years. So I think prioritization of Fort Richmond Townhouse Road is definitely important for the town. But if there's time and opportunity, I think we also submit one for Beaver River. Well, let's say, for instance, we don't get one for Fort Richmond Townhouse Road. We might have another chance to get a second one. I, I know that recreation opportunities are very popular in this town. People want more to do here. And I, I just think we should go all out. And if we can get a grant over 500K for Fort Richmond Townhouse Road and really build it out like we expected to a number of years ago, then I think that would really help the community. So there's no guarantee that we get all of it. But even if we get part of it, that's better than nothing. So I just figure we, we go all out, see what we can get.
Sure, and I, if I recall correctly, don't quote me on this, you two, but I don't recall if it was this grant or another one that we applied for, and the town was interested in more than one opportunities, and there is an opportunity to rank your choices. So if we submit two, Aaron's nodding her head like that is this one. So if we do want to submit, oh, sorry. If we do want to submit two, there may be an opportunity to rank them and say, we as a town are submitting two applications. But if you only want to give us one, this is our first and this is our second. I see your hand? No, okay. Aaron, did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, so just a follow-up to that. So what Mark said, I'm gonna, that's the first thing I'm gonna see. Can we have two applications? Because everything I reviewed, I don't see a ranking system in this one. But again, I will definitely vet that out in regards to Dan's comment. I always, you know, a successful grant application means it went through the criteria very well. And so what I was looking for tonight is some kind of direction on what you wanted, and then look up those and then say, hey, can you share your application with us from the other town? Because that also helps make a successful application, and then we're not reinventing the wheel. And, you know, obviously, numbers are gonna have to be updated. Everybody's surfaces are different. You know, Richmond, if you look over there where the rocks are, we have a, you know, it is graded in a way that is not super potential for a lot of large-scale projects because of the grade and how, how much that would have to be impacted, so that parking is not impacted in our pavilion. So we'll definitely go. It looks like the council's giving direction to vet out Fort Richmond for those projects previously submitted. And then also determine if Beaver River replacement can also happen.
Yes. Is that enough direction? Or would you like more?
Just say so.
Sure.
So moved. She said it better than I could.
All right, so you know the hands. We'll go for our roll call vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Bad Nick.
Yes.
Palashon.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Thank you, Aaron. On to your next item.
So this is a, we've done a lot of updates to the website. I want to thank publicly Allison Hunter, who's joined us just six months now in the town of Richmond. She came with a lot of website expertise. And if you've noticed on the website, we've started to get some changes. And we're trying to have more accessibility, more visuality when you're going from a phone. We also have to make sure that our documents are accessible for accessibility for handicap park hearings. So she has taken on a large part of that task. Our website vendor has, we've been up for a upgrade, and it is part of the services we pay. So part of that is she's been updating current information, making those known. So when we move to this next platform, that will be, I think, more visually, it'll be more user-friendly, that everything's up to date. But part of that is that we have the opportunity to update some photos. And I think in this day and age, everybody uses social media share and stuff, and we don't have rights to them necessarily. So we wanted to kind of advertise a photo campaign for photos of the town and kind of release a publishing that says, you know, it needs to be your photo. If someone's in the photo, you need permission granted. That way, we start to have some materials to update the website. And it can be drone footage. If you look at Jamestown and South Kingstown, they go over our parks and, and have that. And we don't have a drone to utilize in the town. We don't have that in our resources, but many residents do. And so I think it'd be beautiful to capture some of those overheads of our, you know, our hiking trails, our land trust properties, and farms with permission, just to show the character of the town on our website. So I guess it's just basically to kind of approve this this campaign. We have an outdated IT policy subcommittee that would handle the website, but it hasn't been done and acted since like 2013. Don't quote me on that. I would double that, but it's been a very long time. So in the absence of that committee that no longer exists, it's kind of a blessing of council to me.
Sure, I agree. So I'll make a motion to authorize the solicitation of photos of the public for the update, the website. So I got my motion, my second. I'll say, I agree, the website looks so much better. It looks amazing. So keep up the good work. Any other council discussion on this? I see Hannah.
Yeah, just, you know, just so everyone's aware, I think you said November 15th is the deadline, and it's to be sent to townadministrator@richmondri.gov. So that's where the public can send that information. And I think that would be something also be great to have on the sign-out front to, to put it there, just so that everyone can take advantage of that. I think that's a great idea.
All right, so you have nobody else with hands up. I'll go for our roll call vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Bad Nick.
Yes.
Palashon.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Thank you, Aaron. We'll go on to Cheese Report.
Ready?
Good evening.
Good evening, Keith. Happy September, everybody. So I just wanted to share actually two things with you, because I, I don't think people have a full picture of what police officers in this town do on a relatively regular basis. You know, if you don't see an arrest or you don't read about it on Facebook, probably didn't have. But not all time-consuming efforts by the police department result in something they can rarely report out on, on Facebook or something else. So, and missing persons very rarely happen in our town. And it's not, you know, one size fits all. There could be facts that align so that you're concerned about a person. They make a report of this person to help us or to asset-lease, trying to locate this person. But we did have two back-to-back, which is very rare. Tuesday, last Tuesday at 4:30 in the morning, a concerned mother called. And I have to scrub this information. I can't release a lot of details, because I don't want people to be able to identify who was involved. Obviously, you're always worried about the health and wellbeing of a youth or some other adult that might be endangered because of their mental state or because of circumstances of friends around them. In this particular instance, 4:30 in the morning, dispatcher Crystal Marquetti receives a call from a very concerned mother. And as a dispatcher, you're not supposed to react to the fear or excitement of a person, because they could be reporting a cat in a tree and they're crying, or they could be reporting a serious car crash, and it's like they just woke up. You can't really judge the severity or seriousness of something by the sound of a person. But she was clearly concerned that she had a right to be. Her 16-year-old daughter had left her house at above midnight with a person known to the daughter, but not to mom. So we had information at 4:30, almost four and a half hours later, that the daughter never returned home. And all we had was a general description of a car, BMW, dark color, and the first name of this male person, who was also young, but older than the 16-year-old juvenile. And when you're trying to locate somebody who either doesn't want to be found or isn't cooperating with being found, it makes it very challenging. Cell phones are a huge asset. I can't give away investigative techniques. But as police officers in a true emergency, we have the ability to reach out to cell phone holders, carriers, and try to locate somebody geometrically by pinging the phone or cell sites they might be picked up at. The mother reported to us that she was supposed to go to a friend's house in a neighboring town and return with this friend. Never did. And I won't get into that passage of time for about four and a half hours. But she was able to go onto Life 360, which a lot of parents use now, so they can track their kids, see what activities they have. And at 1:30 in the morning, there's a data piece that shows her daughter's doing 130 miles an hour. So now you're, three hours later, we're trying to figure out where the child is. You know, and doing this at 4:30, 5:00, 6:00 in the morning, it's not like you can run down Main Street and say, hey, does anybody know this person? Some people are asleep. But they started to work on her friend network, mom's information that she had on her daughter, and then start reaching out to area police departments that may have been in contact with the friend, et cetera. The phone was going on and off, so they determined at one point it was in Griswold, Connecticut, which is a good, that's about an hour and a half away or so. Long story short, Sergeant Jeff Juan, dispatcher Crystal Marquetti, received the information, did the legwork up front, and then handed it off to Detective Tru Bishop and Patrolman Andy Breity. Actually, Paul Marshall was involved in that as well on third shift. Patrolman Andy Breity and Mike Ellis, who's our SRO. So when they came in for first shift at 6:45, they pick it up, and now they started exhausting leads. And the funny thing about police work is you can absolutely exhaust yourself doing a hundred things that never actually can outlocate a person, but they have to be done. The legwork has to be done. You don't know the outcome. The outcome will be known to you when you get there. And sometimes you'll look back and say, I wish, I wish we had gone to that step versus this step. But they did it by the numbers. They did a great job. But they did it by the numbers. They did a great job. They coordinated with Mass State Police Intelligence Unit. And started to work some social media platforms. They gained the cooperation of a friend of hers who had Snapchat kind of records of where she was. Or who she might be in the company of. They ended up identifying the vehicle. And the driver, who was a college freshman in Massachusetts, located her in Plymouth, Mass at about ten thirty in the morning. So roughly six hours after the report came in, but it was exhaustive work. And those people I just mentioned did a great job of locating her. She was safe. And uh there'll be follow up with mom. If there are needs for her to come in and report something that may have happened in our jurisdiction or another jurisdiction, that'll happen. Main thing is she's alive and breathing and appeared to be uh not in distress. So great work by those officers and that dispatcher. The second day after that, the very next day, Wednesday at nine uh nine ten PM. Dispatcher Tom De Tora, who is a new newly hired full time dispatcher, just phenomenal police work that he does as a dispatcher. Received a call from a concerned adult male about his girlfriend who lives with him in town, who had not shown up to work. He went to her workplace in another town. They said she didn't show up. She didn't call to say she wasn't coming. He goes back home. Now he's got this ambiguous letter. It's not clear. People have responded and they have self harm ideation. They don't disclose those things. Um she she had enough to have him really alarmed and concerned that she was going to try to end her life. She left her cell phone. That's a disadvantage for us at the house with her credit cards, her ID. Basically, anything that would normally be affiliated with a person, she left at home, which is also a sign of her having some unhealthy contemplations. So Sergeant Lutirio, Bill Lutirio, uh dispatcher Tom De Tora, Officer Ryan Donahue on second shift that night. Worked this thing again. I'm reviewing this after the fact. And I'm listening to recorded telephone calls, radio transmissions. It was nonstop. If I played that here, you'd be listening to it for two days. Because of the amount of activity they had in in about three hours to try to locate her. Um and they worked seamlessly together. Sergeant Lutirio, the initial steps in the investigation. Uh you always start with the person was last known to be, and then you expand your search. So they had to do an exhaustive search of the house, the surrounding property, the wooded area around that. They brought in the state police K nine uh to no avail. It didn't didn't track. They asked Carolina Fire to use their thermal imaging equipment. They brought that in. The technology is really great. And it can actually pick up on heat signatures of a body. No luck there. They reached out to Lieutenant Arnold. He came in at about eleven thirty or so to assist. They started to widen the search. And here's the other thing, you may have checked an area and it's negative. But a person that is moving and not wanting to be found may return to the area you've already searched and checked off as. So now the concern is, you know, not wanting to be found and having contemplations of suicide or self harm. You know, you're you're limited as to getting cooperation from the victim to be found unless, you know, for instance, like if they had somebody lost in the woods, they're trying to help you find. In this instance, you're trying to find a person who doesn't want it found. So Lieutenant Arnold, on one of his sweeps, he had been there for maybe twenty five minutes. And this this is the funny thing about police work. These guys that exhausted themselves for like three hours are the ones that want to find this person. Lieutenant Arnold is checking the wood line with his flashlight as he's driving down Kingston Road and locates the missing person. Sitting with legs crossed in the middle of Kingston Road, which in itself could have been dangerous at that time of day. It's pitch black. Someone could have accidentally hit this person. So he locates her, adult female, um had had admitted that she had some self harm stuff. But was willing to get help. They called in the rescue. They took him to the hospital. And I just, I just want to recognize those people that I named again, including third shift officers. Uh Marshall and Blessing who came in at uh ten forty-five or so to assist. She was located about mid. She was perfectly healthy physically, but obviously had some self harm ideation. Now that one took about three hours. The stress you incur as an investigator trying to locate a loved one, not knowing what the outcome is gonna be, it wears on you. I ju- I just cannot say enough about how thorough, how timely, how exhaustive that work was. Just tremendous police work.
Thank you, Chief. Um on to Talia's report. Let you take it away.
So there are a number of different proposed amendments to the district use table. And to another section that is within that same chapter. If you want to go through each of them one by one, which I believe is the task that is before you at this time. I can give you a little bit of information about each, but I have been. I think a lot of the commentary should be saved for the actual public hearing itself. So if you have specific questions as a council about what these changes might mean, please feel free to ask. But I think the substantive conversation should take place once we actually have a public hearing.
Alright, we'll go for our motion and then we'll see if there's council discussion. I'm gonna ask Mark to make a motion.
Okay, so I make a motion uh to uh authorize the town clerk to advertise for a public hearing. Proposed amendments to the following district use table sections. Eighteen point zero six point three zero three entitled private technical comma trade school. Eighteen point zero six. Point three zero eight entitled cemetery. Eighteen point zero six point three two two entitled child and adult daycare for nine or more persons. Eighteen point zero six point four zero nine entitled fairgrounds. Eighteen point zero six point four 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 entitled place of worship. Eighteen point zero six point four four six entitled private club. Eighteen point zero six point four six zero entitled theater or other indoor privately owned public gathering place. Eighteen point zero six point four six two entitled stadium comma arena comma. Or other outdoor privately owned public gathering place. Eighteen point zero six point five zero two entitled power generation. Eighteen point zero six point five one zero entitled broadcast studio comma antenna. Eighteen point zero six point five three six entitled towing with vehicle storage. Eighteen point zero six point six zero four entitled fuel sales and delivery. Eighteen point zero six point zero three zero. To eliminate a duplic- duplicative section. Eighteen point zero six point zero four zero entitled uses permitted by special use permit.
Thank you so much, Mark. We got our motion. We have our second um to authorize all this for our public hearing. Does council want to say anything before we do that? Sure, go ahead, councillor Mandick.
Yeah, just uh, this is one um for Manning question, and I have some more substantive questions. So in the packet that we got, I just want to make sure there's something I didn't miss. There seem to be two eighteen point one six ordinances. Is that on purpose or a mistake? Cause I didn't see any difference between the two.
Or is that something you're able to answer now?
I do not post the material that is linked to the agenda, so I cannot speak to that. I would imagine that it was probably just duplicative and in that element. Um I did submit the draft which shows the uh. Proposed changes to the district use table where an X would be or where a P would be or.
Okay.
Like that. So I I don't know the answer to that question because I'm not the party that actually puts that information together for your packet.
So I'm going to assume it's duplicative and then the public hearing it'll clarify.
Which section?
Alright, so if you if you download the whole packet. The agenda item starts at page twenty-two of the PDF. And page twenty-three starts with eighteen point one six use regulations. And it's got the whole table and just kind of scroll down and it goes through the definitions of each use. And then it gets into accessory uses and there's a cross out of this duplicative section. Um then it goes into the new section, um uses permitted by special use permit. Right. So that's everything that that we're gonna discuss. And then.
Actually, I'm looking at this right now and all of these advertisements are not correct. Because it's eighteen sixteen, not to eighteen point oh six.
Oh, no. So. I'm gonna ask our solicitor who's ready for me to ask, do we need to put this on the next agenda? So it's noticed properly that we can notice a public hearing due to the, it's a innocent typo.
Yeah, Madam President, just give me one.
Yeah. If not, we'll make Mark read them all again.
Well, all the solicitors are looking. I know Erin's probably wondering, page sixty-two of the PDF has the second eighteen point one six ordinance.
So that's, those pages are in the current domain that are stricken. Just wanna make sure.
No, it just seems like it's it's doubled. I just wanna make sure there's nothing. It's what it seems like. We're gonna do this in the next meeting, then I'm going to hold my.
That sounds fun or fair. Um.
The packet, Madam President, the packet's got eighteen. It's got eighteen point one six. However, the notice that says zero six. So you should.
Right. So the notice is what's put at town hall, fire, uh police department, um and on Secretary State's website, not the packet materials. So what do you think? It's it's an innocent typo.
Understand, it should be renoticed.
Should be renoticed? Okay, so then.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Thank you, councillors. Um we'll make a motion to postpone this to the next meeting. Any council discussion on that? Um we'll go for our vote, councillor Dinsmore. And Wilcox, yes. Thank you for noticing that and bringing it to our attention so we didn't accidentally um have an issue.
Yeah, I was just, as it was being rattled off all the different sections.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Excuse me, I don't know. Is it okay to ask questions now?
Um sure, I'll I'll, is this what you had a question on?
Uses permitted with special use permit.
Okay.
So. Is it, is there anywhere I can find that language or is that yet to be posted?
It's been posted to the website. Yes.
Okay. Um but I guess, I guess the number is wrong.
Right. So um so what happened was the agenda did not notice the correct uh statute. Um it should be a one instead of a zero. I don't have it in front of me. It should be eighteen point sixteen instead of eighteen oh six. So we're not supposed to talk about it. The public's not supposed to talk about it. I'm sorry, I know you waited for that and I do feel really bad, but I do have your contact information because I just know you. So I can make sure that you have the information and we can answer your questions. And you can bring them to the public hearing. You can bring your questions to the public hearing as well.
Okay, so that's next one, next.
Uh next meeting is, what was it, the sixteenth? The correct. Thank you. I I really sincerely apologize.
Sixteenth of September.
Yeah, sixteenth of September.
September, okay.
Just for advertisement.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And.
Just to get supportive notes, since there was someone here to discuss it, that now that people are aware of it, even though we're moving it, there's additional time if you do have questions. To e- email the council or email our planner and ask questions as well. I thi- I think it actually kind of works out well. You know, it's a two week delay that there are questions about it. People can look through what's on clerk space now. Formulate some questions, then come more educated the next council meeting. So silver lining.
Yeah. Alright, so no other council discussion. We'll go on to our next item. Thank you, Talia, of course. Alright, on to our Economic Development Commission report by Mr. Gary Parker.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh Gary Parker, Department of Homeland Security Chairman. Uh ma'am, just wanted to add, what I've got before you tonight and the council is to uh just ask. Really to approve a a simple management or a uh almost a facilitation program. That the EDC can now help with managing the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce membership. It's as simple as that. Uh myself, as well as uh Ms. Lee's have basically emailed. We have, we have access to the database. We can add members for our 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 collective team when they need benefits. Uh when they want to access the benefits of the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce uh membership that we started back in basically July. There's a, there's a flow chart there up on uh up on the screen. If you wanted to. It's a, it's kind of, that's just one representative model of of how somebody could, you know, one of our commissions, uh boards, staff members. Uh council can can access the benefits there. Um it's really just as simple as asking, just sending a quick note to me. I'll make or or Aaron if I'm out of, you know, out of out of pocket, but really just to me. And uh and we'll get you logged in, logged in. And so if Kate Schimmel wants to run or get advice on a program. She just has to say, hey, Gary, can you make sure I'm on the database? Boom, you're done. Boom, she runs with it. That's pretty much, pretty much that. Um so what we're asking, ma'am, is um just, and this is this three page memo is basically just saying, is we have all these wonderful benefits. We just wanna have the ability to uh to have you have cognizance that these benefits are there um and that we will manage them. Uh EDC will report once a month to the town administrator. So we will send a what benefits have been used by by the members of our of our municipal team. That way we can say if it's winning or losing and I won't owe you a six hundred dollar check. Um no, but the idea is that we want to make sure, and that that'll be through 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 the OCC themselves. Um so we get feedback as to how much use we're actually getting out of this. Because quite frankly, if if it's a, if it's a great idea, but it but it's not working in practice for some reason, well, that could be that people don't know about it. So we, more information, more information. But if it is working, um and we've got our boards and commissions and staff really utilizing these benefits. Um and I did, anybody in the public, of course, it's in the memo. It's in basically, it's in the agenda. And so this three page uh summary basically of what we, what the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce benefits are is pretty, pretty robust. Actually, pretty good, pretty good amount of stuff for people to be able to use. So um yeah, in fact, we're using it to advertise the town administrator.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Great, thank you so much. So you won't owe me six hundred dollars. You'll the taxpayer six hundred.
That's right.
During my first term, I was the one who suggested we don't pay this anymore because I I saw it in one of the council materials and I was like, who's using it? Nobody said they were using it. So I was like, okay, let's get rid of it and see what happens. Like, see if anybody misses it. So I'm excited to see that um it's coming back. Cause there's also another chamber of commerce that overlaps with Richmond, the Southern Rhode Island. So I wanted the EDC to decide which one they wanted to join. And we've done just that. So I'm excited.
Yeah, and 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 we visited, we visited Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce as well. Great, great people over there, just not quite the same. Um amount of benefits that are easily accessible. So um so yeah, so our folks can, our municipal folks can basically get, go to classes. Take all kind, you know, get uh event planning guidance. And even as noted, just in case, uh is the the grant, the grant proposal. So so Lisa Kinicky told Jim and I, when Jim and I interviewed her a second time. Uh she said that she will help walk us through on a time permitting basis at no cost. Uh if one of our commissions or boards has a grant request, just say, hey, Lisa, uh you know, not being casual about it. But hey, can you get, can you sort of walk us through what are the pitfalls? And she said she'll do that for us. She won't submit it. She won't write the letter, but she can, she can help us. Prepare something like that.
Awesome, sure. Go ahead, councillor Palashano.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, you mentioned um Lisa Kinicky, who's the director for the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce. She's coming to the task force meeting on September seventeenth. Uh so she'll be paying a visit to speak with the task force about how she, as part of the services, may advise us on some of the goals that we have. Our branding, marketing strategy and our initial goals. Uh so that'll be very exciting to see that utilization of that.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for facilitating that.
Of course, sir. You're absolutely welcome.
Anybody else make a man?
So I just, you know, I noticed some, when I was reading through this, that they have a lot of different resources for us. And I know that the Recreation Commission's putting on a fall festival. Have have they been engaged with this to potentially reach out and use some of the resources?
Both uh Andy Rec Rec Commissioner Chairman, as well as Kate, who's engaged with that, absolutely know that this is available. Now that we have permission to log, you know, to basically enter them in the system, she can run with it. So yeah, so they haven't, just due to protocol, sir, we haven't been able to offer to them. But as soon as now that we, if we, if you vote on us, uh approve this, then we can just turn it all on.
That's gonna be my next question. Do you need a motion from us?
Yes, ma'am. I do, please.
Yeah, Erin.
Just for some clarity, and I was just seeing this now, is I think if uh part of the motion for the section that is with volunteers and boards. I think it should be opting in, should be of the board to opt in.
Okay.
And then that motion be sent to, you know, Gary or I prior to them. And then that motion be sent to, you know, Gary or I prior to them providing benefits, because we don't want independent board members working solely if the whole commission hasn't had a chance to weigh in on it. So, but as far as staff, you know, that's something. That's, that's fine, but maybe just adding that caveat that
Okay.
Boards approve adding in, and how that would work, should they wanna access those benefits.
That makes sense, Councilor Dinsmore. Should I see you try to get it? Okay, sorry, my mistake. Anybody else have anything on that? Alright, so do we have that motion? Alright, I will then make the motion to approve the utilization of the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce benefiting town staffs and board with board permission.
Second.
Any further council discussion? Alright, we'll go far, we'll call Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mad Nick.
Yes.
Alshano.
Yes.
Well, yes.
Wilcox, yes. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
You're all set?
Very much.
Alright, Wellness Committee report from Pamela Roland.
Pamela Roland, um, Chair of the Wellness Committee. We have Gary Kowalowski, who's also part of our Wellness Committee. And, uh, so, um, I just am here to give you some highlights and an update, because it's been a while since we have, we're an official town committee and we're still here, we're still working. We have, um, we have nine members now. Five are the original from when we were established four years ago, which as you remember, um, the town council assigned the Wellness Committee with the duties of advising and researching and informing the town council about what the town would need. And at that time, we recommended a human services director and a separate community center that was separate from the police department. So we have been working for, with, and as you remember, um, ARPA monies were used to fund a human resources director, which was Kate. And, and the, uh, community center is still on the long-term goal list. But, um, yeah, so we, uh, have, I just want to give you these highlights. We have five of the original members are still on the committee, and we have four new committee members who have really invigorated with different skills and different expertise and, and ideas. And so we have been working to start with strategic goals. Um, the document that you see attached to the agenda is a strategic or working document that was prepared by Julie Loosner and, and our small subcommittee that was working on the goals. And so the first page that you see is the accomplishments of Kate, the Human Resources Director, which you can read, which is in addition to the goal, the grant writing accomplishments that you'll see in a different document that you're discussing later. But I wasn't gonna go through those accomplishments, because you can read them for yourselves, but I did want to highlight, um, the broader list of goals. There's a number of goals that are listed on that document, and we set up a subcommittee for three of those areas. One is this strategic planning committee, which we will be revising and working on on our goals, or combining some of those goals, which include, for example, well, you see the list there, and so the, uh, communication, marketing, we have health and wellness, we have, you know, the, but the, the highlighted ones are a multi-generational community initiative. We set up a subcommittee on that, and we have we have, which would includes like senior citizens, school students, young adults, working adults, parents, all a multi-generational kind of, uh, collection of people. And this subcommittee is finding ways to support the broader community, not just seniors. But for example, um, promoting numerous goals and activities that would decrease isolation, bring people together, um, like club activities. There's a garden, garden committee and art, art committee, or art activities. Um, promoting behavioral health activities for residents. Um, we would be working to have a presence at the recreation fair or food truck events, so we're doing more to volunteer our time and make our presence known um, as interested in the wellness and health of the town. Um, promoting farmer's market and community garden. Those are some of the things that we think are gonna become more important. Transportation is the second subcommittee, which is critical, because as you may know, Ripta has withdrawn all of its transportation out of Richmond, so we not only don't have uh, transportation into, I think McKee is.
There's been updates to that, sorry, I, you probably saw my facial reaction, but there were, um, some updates to that, so not all, but some, some routes have been reduced, but not all.
I, I knew that it was like objected to and the governor was reconsidering, but still, even with the way it was, Richmond had very limited transportation. And so that's a, a critical component of, you know, health of the town. So what we were hoping to do is, um, support a feasibility study that would identify transportation providers, um, identify the specific needs for transportation and identify, um, transportation sharing like with volunteers, um, cost share options. And, um, so those are the three committees and, and therefore those are the ideas that we think are the most important, that we will be working on in the future um, with the current Human Services Director we're advising and supporting, and hopefully as that position expands, you know, that, that, that will be a big purpose of it. But also, um, the areas of relationships and discussions with other town commissions is important also. We have been in touch with the Economic Development Commission regarding, uh, trend, well, economic development, transportation, farmers markets, wellness fairs, those are, that's one of the issues. The Senior Activities Commission, um, like social, social events, clubs, wellness security, presentations, isolation reduction, so that's, we have had discussions with, um, that, that commission and the Recreation Commission, of course, Kate. And, um, it's on that commission and, and we're working in collaboration on some areas with the Recreation Commission, but I wanted to highlight the Economic Development Commission, because, um, we have had several discussions with with Gary, who's come to some of our meetings, we've gone to some of their meetings, but the idea of wellness activities such as like transportation to, uh, to necessary appointments or farmers markets and wellness fairs. We've talked about how Wellness Committee and Economic Development could merge some of their resources so that, for example, a business might want to, um, host a wellness fair that would bring people to their business. It might relate to wellness, or it might not relate to wellness, but bringing people around the community to come out and visit the business and talk about wellness, or farmers markets, farmers or business people, and finding a space for people to come together that benefits the town with fresh produce or, or other things that a farmer's market brings, and people wouldn't have to travel twenty minutes to URI or
Yeah.
Goddard Park. So those are the things that we have been working on and that we want to continue to work on. And, um, and so, I don't know, we, do you want to add, does anybody have any questions or add anything?
I don't. Yeah, you're trying to get Gary to add more?
Well, or if he, if, I don't know, if you, if you have anything to add. Or.
Or if she's got it.
Yeah.
Well, certainly, Gary Kowalowski, Richmond resident. Certainly Pam has covered pretty much what we've been working on, uh, for quite some time. The, the other issue is the, uh, hopefully the formation of a village common in, in the Richmond area. Uh, right now it looks like there's some discussion with having a group of really smaller communities, more rural communities banding together, being Exeter, Richmond, and Hopkinton, uh, so that we could form a, a, a good coalition of volunteers uh, to help out the members that would be joining, uh, the organization. And there's a lot of benefit there with the transportation issues also, because even, even a simple ride to Wood River Health, uh, may be a significant hindrance to a Richmond resident looking to get healthcare. Uh, so we're, we're certainly looking to advance that, uh, proposal and get that, hopefully get that up and functioning as a a three-town effort, uh, so that if we don't have enough volunteers from the Richmond area, we may be pulling some volunteers from Exeter or from Hopkinton to help us out.
Yeah, or even vice versa, you know, if they're short on volunteers, we can send them their way.
Exactly.
Um, I know that there was a presentation a couple of weeks back, um, at Alanis, at a local restaurant. Um, for people to learn more, but people who may have missed that, where can they get more information on Village Commons?
And that was my next, um.
Oh, we beat you to it.
Taken the words right out of my mouth here. But, um, yeah, in fact, I know that, um, what, it is a three-town, Exeter, uh, Hopkinton, and Richmond, but they're, I believe they're going to call it the Wood River Village.
Okay.
And so that will encompass the three towns, and Ryan at Alanis just really was very generous in in helping to host that, that event, which brought out probably thirty, thirty, thirty-five people. And it was very effective and informative, and I believe they're collecting volunteers already. And so, um, what, the reason that I wanted to, and that we wanted to bring that up as a separate issue is that one, it's not connected to the town, and it's not connected really to the Wellness Committee, although Kate has done an amazing amount of work to work to bring that idea to the town. And, um, as part of, like, I was participating in the Leadership Rhode Island a while back, and that the Village Common is what I took on as my volunteer project for the town, because we've already been working on it. And so, um, so now, um, I just wanted to let people know that what it is, is like, the, a village is like a quote village. It's not about the town or the village. It's a, a village is a group of volunteers and a group of members who are there to help each other. It's like people helping people. The volunteers could be of any age, really, and, um, and the members are paying members. Volunteers are screened and, uh, trained to provide services and help to older adults. Older adults can be volunteers and they can be members. But, um, volunteers can be over eighteen and they are screened and trained, and members pay dues as a member. But it's a pay what you can kind of model. On the website, there's a suggested monthly payment, but it is pay what you can. The member decides what they will pay. And what that means is you're a dues-paying member. This is not charity to help older adults. This is members and volunteers helping each other for things that would not be, like, electrician work, plumbing, that is not what volunteers do. But volunteers match what they prefer to do to what, what they're asked to do. So, part of the point in, and handing out the flyer which is attached to the agenda is, which you see up here, I have paper flyers, is to advertise to you, to the community, and anybody who's listening or reading the agenda that.
That's not a timer, you can keep going.
This, this is, um, this is a, a three-community-wide project, and the volunteers will be really important for us to create a village. And so if you want to or are able to volunteer to support the, support the tri-town village, you can, the, uh, the, um, contact information is on the flyer, the website is on the flyer. And when you click on the website, there is a menu, you see the menu, volunteer is the category, and there's a pull-down, and you can fill out an application to, um, become a volunteer, and then they will contact you to be trained and to go through that process and become part. You can also call, um, Caroline Dillon or Susan Dorita at the phone number that's listed there, two-two-eight-eight-six-eight-three. And, um, and they will bring or mail you, they can mail you a paper application at the website. Application isn't easy, or is, if it's, if you prefer a paper, that's available too. So, um, help us out.
Yeah.
Volunteer, and we can get a village for our three towns that will really, and the purpose is helping older adults or younger people with disabilities to stay in their house, to age with health and independence and, and respect. And, and it's just like a thing, and that answers, that could answer a lo- a large part, as Gary said, the transportation issue. But in addition to the village, which helps older adults, the transportation volunteers, we need to, you know, collect that for younger people or figure out ways to get people to apartments. But one of our members, Leah Arseneau, had, in her experience in another position that she had, she said that Richmond, something was standing out about Richmond when it came to, um, getting rides to appointments, like so many people couldn't get to their appointments because they didn't have rides, but that did not happen in Richmond. Somehow people always from Richmond got to their appointments, because it was either friends or neighbors. And so, you know, it was, that was really heartening to hear.
Yeah, that was nice.
So we already have, you know, a kind of town. And we all are aging. We all have older adults in our families. We all will be an older adult if we aren't already. And, uh, so this is a whole-town initiative, and, you know, I'm really excited about it, and I hope we, we get a village going soon. And especially with three towns working together, that could be very possible.
Yeah, great, thank you so much. I think it's wonderful too, and it's great to hear that the town has, I don't know, so many nice people are in it. Um, it's really great to hear too, all the, not to back into your first report there, but it's really great to hear all the boards and commissions are working together.
Yeah.
Crossing over, visiting each other's meetings, because that's exactly what we need. Um, it was so helpful when I was.
So many things are related. We can't work in silos. We really have to work, work together.
Any other councilors have any questions? Alright, see you in none. Um, like we, Aaron.
So the tri-town name of the village is going, is it gonna be Wood River?
I think it's gonna be the Wood River Village. It's something like that, but that was mentioned, what, um, Barry, my husband, did a training this morning, and that was, because he didn't know what to call it, Richmond, Exeter, Hopkinton.
I like that.
It's really awkward, and I think they've decided it's gonna be called Wood River Village or something similar.
So I just want to make a suggestion. So in Richmond, we have five postal codes. And so it's confusing enough for people they don't know if they reside in Hopkinton or Richmond based on their postal code. And so, and we have a Wood River Junction.
Right.
Village, so it can be limiting.
Do you have a suggestion?
I don't, but I just wanted to point that out. It might come across that it's limiting to Wood River.
That's a good point.
Postal codes is.
I liked the name, but that is a good point. The villages here get confusing for some.
We could say, I could have them say Wood River Tri-Town Village or something along those lines, or I don't know a different name. Wood River is the river, but, you know, and the river goes through all three towns.
Yeah.
I think, um, but.
Like the Greater Valley Village, bigger than just Hope Valley.
Greater Valley?
Greater, you guys will think of something.
I kind of like that, Greater Valley Village. I mean, yeah.
Well, I could say that.
No, it doesn't, right?
People, if people think about it for a few minutes and feel like emailing me, um.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, I, because I would, I'm, I'm on the, uh, steering committee, so you could definitely suggest a different name that would be less confusing, so I thank you for that point.
I just, I just didn't want, like, Carolina residents to say, oh, I can't be part of this, because I don't live in Wood River.
Yeah, right.
Even though it's a postal code, it's not their residency.
Okay, so. Welcome suggestions. If you can email me, it's wallenster@gmail.com. Welcome suggestions, if you can email me, it's Wallenster at gmail dot com, I think I'm listed. But um but I will definitely bring that up to them and see if we can think of a different, a different name that's descriptive, but. Of the tri town, so.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you.
All right. Uh so now we are on to unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is the discussion consideration of amendments to the Richmond. Ordinances two point four zero Recreation Department um. Last time we addressed this, we had asked staff to do a little additional research for us. And then we have this memo here um that addresses some of that research and. I'm not sure where I should start because I have a lot of thoughts here, um to be quite honest with you and I'm not sure. Typically, we try to open it up as a motion, but. I don't, I'm not going to do that here just to just kind of have a conversation and see where we want to go. The. Memo we received said that we cannot create a new department as was suggested to kind of keep the recreation separate from. Human services and that purpose was because asking. The volunteer board to take on all these responsibilities and oversee that will be a lot because that is a a nuance to our charter, so. In order to create a new department, it will need to be done through a charter amendment.
That's correct.
That's correct. Um and then there was a discussion of putting additional duties within this department, which. Upon further conversations um earlier today with the solicitor, we can't do that either. Um because the charter is very clear in stating that. The section E says there shall be a recreation department supervised by a recreation commission, administered by a director. The department shall be responsible for operation and staffing of recreation programs. But we can amend this ordinance to have. The Recreation Department oversee for Richmond Townhouse Road, there's a few things in there as well. Um but there's a few of these items that. I don't consider recreation and I wouldn't want to go forward um. For example, F, establish partnerships between public and private organizations. Um it's focused on recreation, but also wellness and social um health, things like that. G is just a very direct one, serve as the first point of contact for residents in need of social services and resources. Probably can have that there, but um H, manage support programs activities to the. Senior center in collaboration with the senior activities. Ex senior activities is fun, we have luncheons and celebrations, so that could still be overarching. I will say while I'm on that one, it still says chairman, um I would prefer gender neutral terms of just chair, I. Everything um and and the rest that we added, I think, would also be fine under this, but the combination. And the combining that was pitched to us during the budget cycle and was pitched to us months ago, I don't see a way it can go forward um. When we're diving into our charter and if anybody else has thoughts or concerns or questions, um we can dive into it. But it seems to me like we will have to keep it. Um kind of business as usual, we have a temp, we have this position till the end of twenty twenty six. And we will work towards if we keep it through proper channels and the rec director would be its own rec director. I hope that was clear because it's a lot of information being thrown out at once and I know. We talked a lot about it, but I do see a question from Council Mad Nick.
Yeah, I I agree. I think the first time we talked about this, I asked the same as not same, a similar question to what Mark asked. And we're, let's be honest, I mean, we're trying to be savvy here, we're trying to work within the balance of the charter and the zoning to. Um improve the services amenities that are available to Richmond residents. Um we put some money aside in the budget to do this, doesn't mean the money is spent, it's there. If we don't move forward with this, the money just sits there and it'll end up. Going into the fund balance or we'll have it available for for next year. I I think it's probably in our best interest um as a council, we can propose an amendment to the charter. We have time to think about this, we have about, you know, a little over a year. We do have an election coming up in twenty twenty six, I don't think it's that difficult for us to wait one year. Put this uh put together an amendment for the charter and let. It go to referendum and let the town decide if they want this um this type of service. Um I think that's reasonable, I think that's fair. Uh again, I thought it was pretty sad when you tried to work it into what we have, but I. I just, I agree with with Sam, I just don't think it's going to work the way that we we want it um. I think it's it's better if we go forward with a charter amendment, let the town decide if they want this. And and do it that way, which is the the more proper procedure and then we can. We can have over the next year or so, have a discussion of exactly what we want the department to be, what we want to have it, you know, include or not include. Um it it gives us some more flexibility, I think, than we have now and I like having that flexibility and we can get a lot of public input.
Right. Um I will go to the council comments, but I do want to just say that I think we may need to be cautious about talking about if. We want to do a charter amendment because it doesn't stay on the agenda, we're discussing charter amendments. Um I'm going to leave that to the solicitor.
Yeah, I think Counsel Madick is he's just.
No, I mean, like going forward, like all of us getting into that, like we should put it on a future agenda to have a more in-depth conversation. Okay.
I'm impressed, for the purposes of discussion tonight, though, how you would proceed, I think is appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
As to why, as as to why you may be not doing something with this because you.
Okay.
Different way.
Thank you, I see you, Counsel Promashano.
Yeah, so just uh for clarity, I mean, I think um. There were a lot of uh collateral impacts that were tied into this idea, this thought process. Um one was, you know, there uh you had, you know, three separate budgets or two separate budgets. Uh you know, you had the Recreation Director, the Recreation Commission has its own budget and you had the Elder Affairs Commission. And having a person in this position, it was thought that the oversight would help to streamline that process. Um and keep costs under control for the taxpayers, so that was one. Um also, we said it over and over again, when we are able to see number four Richmond Townhouse Road come to fruition. Uh the person in this recreation or this position was going to be instrumental. In helping to maximize the utilization and oversee any kind of special events at that site that are all related to. You know, outdoor creation, health, wellness, whatever. Um but it but it seems like based on the advice from the solicitor and what uh Chair Wilcox has stated tonight that. Uh what we can go forward with is a Recreation Director and that Recreation Director would have a dotted line. According to the charter today, reporting to the Recreation Commission, which is what the charter says. Uh but also could that Recreation Director oversee the senior activities because the senior activities are activities and that's. Activities um and then that would be on one side of the house, the other side of the house would be that we would continue. With the health and services position with the fantastic work that that individual has been doing. Um funded by ARPA through the end of twenty twenty six and then. We decide how we can move forward to uh continue the benefits that our community has reaped for that.
Yep.
Um the one thing I'll say is that the Recreation Director position, I would like to see that as a full time position. Not a part time position, it's a part time position today, uh that's certainly uh because. Um having been on the Recreation Commission myself, having been on the Economic Development Commission. Uh you know, those types of that role to see it the maximus maximizing that um. I think it's super helpful to have it full time, but that's a debate, counsel, but anyway, thank you.
Sure, any other council comments? No, from Jeff, anything?
I I still don't see why we can't do that. Is it your recommendation that we not do this?
By by ordinance amendment?
Yeah.
Yes.
That we can't put under the umbrella of the Recreation Department these additional.
The the chart, the reason I. Counselor, the reason I say that is this, when when I read the charter, it's it's very specific as to. And Counselor Wilcox, she read it, but it talks about the creation of departments. So departments, permanent departments have to be created by charter amendment, they have to be expressed in the charter. So this department doesn't yet exist. So to create, to create a human services department, you'd have to do it by charter.
No, I I agree with that, but why can't we put some of those functions within the Recreation?
I think I think you could, um if, as as President Wilcox said, if the senior activities, most of those are recreational activities. It just happened to be for seniors, could that be under the rec, direct director, I think, I think absolutely.
From what we had discussed, where it says the department shall be responsible for operations, staffing of recreation programs. So yes, the senior department is like that's the senior activities, the elder affairs barely as a quorum, that's that's more human services driven. But our human services director was brought on board because Richmond is a desert for resources. Now, uh the two one one van was here today and earlier um in my. Public service, I brought the first two one one van here and the director said that Richmond is a desert for resources. Was so excited to bring that van here, called me back on his vacation and worked on with me on a vacation. That was before we got Kate and and Kate's duties are to enhance those services, she and she has, she brought it to a more accessible location. Um and she's done so much more work around human services, but um. Recreation is soccer and egg hunts and tree lightings and all these fun things and I don't think that. Needing help finding resources for housing and food stamps fall under recreation. Um so it might be one of those situations where we can, but we shouldn't. And based on what it says here in the charter, that the department shall be responsible for recreation programs, I don't think. That the human services reports that I've received fall under recreation. But I see Counsel Promashano's hands, I'm going to him.
Yeah, that was my same understanding and I I think, so what you're saying is to to Counselor Reynolds comment. There are recreation activities that we can put under that that may be, but we cannot, based on the charter, put health and human services. Responsibilities under a Recreation Director, is that correct?
I don't think it's prudent to have activities that aren't recreation.
Correct.
The umbrella of the Recreation Department and Director.
Right.
Senior activities, as from what I can see, are mostly recreation activities for older people. So yes, I think they could be under that that department and that director.
But just.
But human services, I I think i- is a stretch.
Right, and the list of all of the great things that have been done by that human services director could not be put under that.
I I don't think so.
Yeah.
I I I think it should, I think it needs to be under the charter, needs to be its own department.
Yeah, unfortunate.
All right, we've had two people, their hands up, I have our clerk and our wellness director, do you want to go first, Aaron, or do you want me to send it over to Pamela?
Oh, okay, so just for some background history, so this started when. The previous Recreation Director resigned within short notice of camp. So I think if this is, you know, we had a lot of thoughtful conversations. Because of the charter and creating and human services is a position by ARPA funds only. And so I just um want to make that kind of known and so this amendment. Was was a way to bridge a gap where in Richmond, several departments wear many different kinds of hats. And so because um Jim had alluded to this earlier, the Recreation Director was typically basically. Responsible for summer camp and then um did not have offices here. And a few activities through the year in consultant with the Rec Commission, so if this is. Kind of the avenue to go, you also have to take into account the fact that there's nobody here to field any questions, there's nobody. Um it now goes on to the Finance Department to make sure that the finances for summer camp is collected. Reimbursements for any um you know, HSA reimbursements that happen, all facilitated through another department. Town Clerk's Office then now has to handle all summer camp inquiries. Um there's nobody physically here and so it's already been leaning towards the other departments and because of. Um the activity of the Human Services Director on Rep Commission. It kind of formalized into more of a natural thing of having somebody manage it here. And never the expectation that this wouldn't be fully vetted and advertised um for anyone and so. Then it was advertised when there was a vacancy, there wasn't any um. To my knowledge, there was not, um there was no recommendation brought forward for hiring and so and now we have a summer camp. We have no rec director currently, we have the summer camp director just resigned. Um and so we have a volunteer board of a rep commission that is amazing.
Hmm.
However, they're planning and getting another project off the ground and so while the ordinance. The charter, we've discussed that language of a rec commission that's volunteer supervising an employee. And that I think we need to change and we've all discussed that and our hands are kind of tied, but just. To clarify, some of this was done because of all of those vacancies, um because we did have. Um town staff that is a resident engage in all these activities and I previously served on the Rec Commission. So I know the work that it takes as a staff member to put on the tree lighting event and the time that it takes away. From your 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 regular job to do that because they're all volunteers and they can't. So if this conversation continues, I think part of this ordinance amendment would be some direction. On if that's the path chosen, how this ordinance should be, how this position should be advertised. The expectation of duties, hours, because it it's not working in Richmond and it has not worked as far as. For the benefit of our residents for activities, I mean, you look across the line, we have Hockington, they have a rec director, they have assistant rec director, they have staff. Clerical staff, similar sized community and we haven't had that because it's. Been a stipended position to run basically camp and then additional, you know, the February one day activity. The tree lighting and the Easter egg hunt and the fishing dirty, so I just. Want to make sure that everybody is aware that certain other things of this will have to change. And there is a way to move forward, I think, on some of the human services component, but the grant expectations and the involvement that's happened. Will also have to be kind of changed because I think, because this has been discussed so long as an umbrella. Um that that was what was going to happen and that now it's going to be siloed out. So just to make sure that those definitions, staff has some guidance on.
Yeah, I understand and I I uh I'm going to say something first, um I think that we've already. We have discussed all that at length, so I do appreciate you bringing it up again to the public, people may not have heard it. Don't want to speak for all of council, but I do believe that that's the reason it came this far, because at least for myself, the need is understood. How we get there is also really important and. It it in my eyes can't go forward in the way it was envisioned as an umbrella, but I do understand that we we have a need for the rec. Um department to have a a dedicated director and I think that that to Counselor Promashano's point would be. A future conversation and like you had alluded to as well, what the hours are and that will come, but for today's purposes, it's just. It it's not going to work out the way it was planned and. And and I think that's just because this council is dedicated to handling things in an open manner. So part of that is having these discussions in open and bringing it forth and vetting these things out publicly. So, I don't know, I appreciate it, but. Things are just bound to happen where we have to kind of backtrack, pause the breaks and see other avenues to get us to where we need to be. Um so I think that's all I had to say, because I just want to appreciate and value what you had already said, because we know that you guys are overworked. But I did see, heard Dan and then I'll go to you. All right, I'm sorry, I'm going to work.
I make a motion that we authorize the town clerk to advertise for public hearing. Uh amendments to Richmond Town Code Avoidances, Chapter two point four zero, Recreation Department as presented.
No second, go ahead, Counsel Madick.
I don't, it's the first meeting, I didn't bring my budget information. Jim made a comment earlier that uh he'd like to see the Recreation Director be full time position. And I'm trying to remember what we put in the budget for this and of course, you know, some people said, oh, you're doing it backwards, you're violating the charter, well, that's that's not the case, right? They they're, all this stuff is happening at the same time and you have to be proactive, so we practically put. A small amount of money, in my opinion, in the budget to try to handle this. I don't think it's working out on paper as we thought it was going to and I think Sam put it um a good way. I think we have an opportunity here, like I mentioned earlier, to consider in the future charter amendment, but. Let me finish, Mark, that we can make the Recreation Director full time, hire someone to. Um to do some things that you just mentioned and what Jim had mentioned earlier. And keep the human services as is until twenty twenty six because we have that funded until the end of the year. So it gives us a year to really think through this and present to the town and referendum. Exactly how we want to break off the different departments and responsibilities between personnel. Think it gives us time to do that and not kind of get into the discussion about. Is it a recreation activity or health and human services and then hey, you just put something that's helping human services under something recreation and that doesn't make sense. hey, you just put something that's helping human services under something recreation, and that doesn't make sense.
Um, I just want to comment that you said that people had
Get recognized?
Oh, yeah, sure. I I did recognize you a second ago when you
No, I had my hand up and he went
Go for it. You made a motion.
I think you need to look at recreation as broader than soccer. And it it's broader than that. It's like the YMCA. Everyone thinks it's a gym. Well, it's more than a gym. Recreation encompasses wellness, which encompasses mental health, which encompasses physical activity, which encompasses a whole nutrition, a whole host of areas. And to look at it as narrowly as you're looking at it, I think is 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 a mistake. And I just, you know, we use Hopkinton as the example, oh, Hopkinton. Well, I'm looking at their org chart and underneath the director who's Mary Sawyer, they have a Director of Public Welfare within their Recreation Department. So I I think you're being overly restrictive. You've got tunnel vision. You've got this this idea of what recreation is, and I think it's 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 misguided. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Sure. I just remembered that I forgot Pamela out in the audience. I said Erin could go and then Pamela, and I ignored her. Do you mind if I go to her first and then to you?
Pamela.
I appreciate that.
My apologies.
I just talked to you very enthusiastically about being the Chair of the Wellness Committee. And now I believe, one, I'm comforted that you're gonna be talking about this more. This whole paradigm to me is so frustrating and disappointing because one, I guess the advice that you're that you have is that the town council has no flexibility or authority to create a department. And the other thing, to me, recreation is a human service. We have human services that are wellness, health, all of these human services that are operating with the Human Services Director now. Recreation is one of those who, anything that benefits people of the town, health wise, athletic wise, rec uh play wise, anything that that develops healthy living is a human service. And at least this position, which we have been talking about for many months as this is could become, you have budgeted for a full time position, at least call it human services and recreation as a department. Because I don't think people if if you want to have people understand that they can come to this department for anything that concerns them, it's a human service, whether it's recreation, whether it's transportation, whether it's well being, whether it's behavioral health. Anything like that is a human service. And so recreation, just like Mark said, is just as important to health and well being as getting housing as it's all part of that whole collective, in my view. And I think it's very disappointing. Um, and as much as I respect the town solicitor who's reasonable and well educated, well, you know, very informative and capable. I just think it's a, he gave an educated opinion about how he's reading that charter. And is there any way to challenge that or rethink that in any way to give the town council flexibility to manage the staff? The other thing that's gonna happen with this is that this position is gonna be isolated from all the rest of the staff. If you have one position that is either part time or full time overseen by a volunteer commission, as excellent as they are, everybody else is overseen by the town manager. And it's like, how is that gonna work? How is that gonna be inclusive of human services and recreation? And if I can go back to the very beginning, the report that we gave you was extensively researched by a number of people with good expertise. And these are the things that we said, based on all of that data that we provided, that the town needs a human services director to coordinate, refer, to have, give the police something a person who's up to date on the services that are available. So every time they interact with a family at risk or people at risk, they have a current place in the town to go to. I mean, this is really important. And to isolate one staff member from the rest of the staff to to ignore the work of the Wellness Committee or undermine it is is just difficult. And so to me, it's just like I'm glad that you have a year to discuss it, but I really think that this has the potential to undermine the work of a lot of good people in this town and to isolate you know, two part time positions. Who's gonna take that? Who qualified is gonna take a position like that? So I've used up my three minutes.
No, we're not timed. I had a question on your statement. Um, and then I'll go to Jim. So you would think that combining them would not isolate them, but separating them would?
Yeah.
Okay, because
Combining combining them would, I mean, I think
I understand. It's just um from our prior conversations, I had thought hiding it within recreation would diminish the position.
Yes.
Um.
But calling it hu- something by like human services and recreation or something like
And that was a pitch that I had had um that didn't come through these uh amendments. And and that that is part of the story of how we're having this conversation and fleshing it out. But I appreciate you clarifying your opinion for me. Um, we'll go back to Jim.
Yeah, I mean, um Pamela, I think you can see clearly that uh we echo your frustration, your disappointment. What I want as an individual and a council person is to have a department head called Human Services and Recreation. That is what I want. But it is not about what I want. It's about what the charter allows me as an elected official to do. And I did have a conversation with the solicitor, and I'm not, this is not pinned on you. This is based on our conversation. I made the mistake in my first term of going against the advice of the solicitor, and I paid the price for it. So I am well aware of the importance of the solicitor to keep us from making a mistake that will draw the town into litigation. Now, that said, I think a lot of great points were brought up. I think Counselor Reynolds has highlighted some things that are in Hopkinton that may give us some latitude, and I'd love to hear the solicitor's response based on that. If Hopkinton is doing that and having a recreation department that has human services, does that maybe change the dynamic?
I don't, I don't know what the Hopkinton Town Charter says.
Says exactly what it says.
Okay.
So their their charter
Hold on one second. We're gonna wait for the solicitor to have a review and let us know. I know, or it's something we table if you need more time.
It, well, they have, they have a provision about additional departments or officials. You don't believe we have similar to that.
No, but the recreation part.
Yeah, okay, sure.
The Recreation Department definition is exactly the same as ours.
Yes, the definition is the same. They have forty nine hundred, the additional departments.
So
Which the town council, which is, which we don't have, which the town council may create, abolish or change by ordinance such other departments. They can change the departments.
So that is what was missing from us.
We don't really have that.
Is that?
Oh, well.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Mark.
My point is if they, under that provision, have within their Recreation Department a person who's in charge of public welfare, and they have programs that are not just soccer and basketball, we can do the same thing. We don't have to, I'm not saying we create another department, but within recreation, you I'm just you can do the things we want to do within recreation. I don't know what Charles Towns Charter says, but I pulled up their recreation page. Their adult programs, a nurse, social services, film.
So like recreation was an old word.
Yes.
Used decades ago.
Mm hmm.
And now it's like but they're adding the services that are more
Yes.
I just, I just really hope that the Wellness Committee, and I'm speaking for myself. This is my frustration and disappointment. We have not discussed this yet. And we will discuss it at the next Wellness Committee meeting.
Yeah.
But um I just hope that the research and the advice that the Wellness Committee has provided and the support that we provided to the current director is heard and listened to as absolutely necessary for this town. This town has nothing that other towns all around us have. There's, I mean, other towns are way more situated, well situated than Richmond is. And so I just think we need to listen to that and bring people together. We're very many silos in this town. You know, there's not a lot of support and the human services that have been provided has been pretty beneficial for a lot of people, and it can grow whether it's recreation and human services or whether we make sure that people know that recreation and and supportive human services is, I mean, it is broad. Mark's right. Recreation is a way broader term. But I don't know that everybody knows that. And so the information that we provide in a title is important.
Right. And that was something that I was adamant about when this first came up, and they're calling it a community director. I don't know what that means. I don't know what that is. I would really like for it to be Human Services and Recreation Director. Um, and that's where the memo was telling us, while a name for a director might be more suited for REA- REA- events, additional dues can be placed under. So it's implying that we can't do that. Um, but I did confer with the solicitor and we can. So I do have that in my notes, that that's something we can add to two point four zero zero two zero director, a sentence at the end that says, the title of the director shall be the Human Services and Recreation Director. Um, that was my initial question. And then it it did, it snowballed into these other questions because I thought that the two concerns of duties and title were being conflated into one. And once we separated those out, we were having concerns with the duties. But if we want to i- if you're confident, with what you read in Hopkinton, Solicitor, if you're confident that we can do this, I'm amenable. But if you also want more time to do legal research to see if we can, I I'd appreciate that as well. So I'm gonna defer to you what you think.
I would ask for the next meeting.
Mm hmm.
Counselor Reynolds has raised some issues. I'll look into that. See if there's, it's possible that maybe you can make an amendment. You had an ordinance similar to forty nine hundred in in Hopkinton, which allows you to establish and restructure.
Mm hmm.
So restructuring could be a way to add to the responsibilities of the REC Department.
Yeah.
You could do it that way, which would be a lot quicker than certainly amendment to the charter.
Mm hmm.
That that may, that may be a way to do that. Certainly, if you, there are another two weeks and I'll uh, I'll explore those possibilities as well.
Yeah.
If you want.
And are you talking about maybe restructuring it in a way that doesn't have to go through a referendum?
That, yes, that would be the point. Yes.
That would be great.
All right, sure, go ahead.
So um the council, we vetted this back and forth. And so the additional duties in defining out the director was, did come out later today, that so my memo
Yeah.
is not current because of the new information, looking at that. So there is the ability, and I think a lot of this is like kind of a um, is kind of a public relations of what we're calling it issue. Um, and so if there is the ability, it's very clear, we cannot add another department by charter. So um, that is the only way we can do it, is a charter amendment. However, you know, in some of the initiatives that we've done is we're looking at efficient ways in restructuring offices that was just done for in the Finance Department and trying to come up with less silos, more cross training, more relationship building. Um, that was clearly presented tonight with um, the Chairman, um, Gary Parker's presentation with the EDC and trying to have create that, those relationships as well as Pamela stated in her wellness, in creating someone who can facilitate among all of those things. And that's why the charter look um, the visual that I presented looks a little differently because it's such a fluid relationship between the REC Commission, the Wellness and senior activities. And so if there's a way, um, because initially we couldn't change the title of the director, it just said that the REC direct department shall be headed by a director.
Yeah.
However, in this ordinance, we can further define a director. I think that that meets all of our goals as far as advertising to the public appropriately. Those, we can add duties under a department. We we know we can do that. We've kind of vetted that out. Um, and knowing that that might be a better way to approach an immediate need because, again, um the Fall Fest is coming up in another month, and the big tree lighting is coming up, which is our most popular item. And so this still has to go to public hearing, has to be finalized, and then we have to advertise for the position. So while I do not want to rush anything, I think anybody who knows me wants to do it correctly. However, I think if there's a way to get this to move forward and vet in a draft sooner than later, I think it's gonna be more beneficial to the community because we have major pop, you know, events that are that are coming. So if this isn't done, who serves in those roles? Because we do currently have a vacancy in that. So I just
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I I agree with what you're saying. Um, and I think that we have to find the right way to do it and find the right person. Um, the REC Commission, I I have the full confidence that they're gonna pull off this Fall Fest with or without a REC Director as well as the tree lighting. I don't need to explain to you who played all the roles. So I think we'll be okay there. But let's move this along. I I do think that if, again, getting the feedback from the solicitor as far as how we could take this approach as um, as was outlined, I'm more than happy to have a special meeting if we need to. Um, not, not that I want a special meeting, but if we're not able to solve it tonight, I don't want to waste a lot of time. So
Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
You got it.
I think there's been some really good information presented and looking at both Hopkinton and Charles Towns Charter and their ordinances. And just listening to what everyone's saying. You know, what this flow chart that our interim town administrator and clerk presenters, I mean, it titles Recreation Director, but looking at our charter says administered by a director. It doesn't say Recreation Director. So based on the information provided, I mean, my opinion is changing on how I felt when I come in here. That I think I think Erin put it the right way is we're getting caught up on like the title of the director. And I admit, I think that's where I'm getting caught up a little bit. Um, and I want to be clear, especially with what Pam said, I mean, I want to see this happen, but I want to make sure we're doing it the right way. It's transparent for the community. And, you know, we're, we're having the right discussion. I think we are. I know there's some frustration with everyone up here. Um, because this is complex. Um, but I think if we discuss this two weeks from now, um, given this information, let our solicitor do a little more research, especially with the other towns, I think that would be helpful. I think in the flow chart, if you know, it's just cross out recreation, just have director. And then I think that that likely satisfies some of the concerns that have been brought up.
I agreed. And that that was the only thing I planned on bringing up today was that, because I had pushed for it over the weekend, saying, why can't we change the name? It just says director, it just says director. But then all this other information came out that we needed to vet. So I definitely appreciate the conversation. Sorry, it's a little frustrating to you, Mr. Reynolds, but it it's an important conversation to have. Um, so we seem to have a consensus that we're gonna have our solicitor compare our charter to other nearby towns, see if it's something we can do so we can have an official legal opinion. And we'll make our decision from there.
You'll have something in two weeks.
Yeah.
You'll have
For the next meeting.
You'll have it before.
Awesome.
Motion to continue this item to uh September sixteen.
Second.
All right. Any further counsel discussion?
Sure. I I know it's frustrating to delay things, but I, and I know with bureaucracy and red tape in government, it's slow. And I know this frustration up here from all of us. But two weeks is not really that good deal, especially like G O I time. I mean, two more weeks to get the right information.
It's an end.
Make a good decision. I just want to thank everyone for their patience.
All right, so we'll go for a roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Manick.
Yes.
Promashano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Will Cox, yes.
All right. Yes?
Request a five minute break.
Well, I don't hear a second. Well, I don't hear a second. Okay, there we go. I'll go for a roll call vote. Counselor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Manic.
Yes.
Tom Chano.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Wilcox, yes.
Thank you.
Hey.
Is to update our cards and what we do is I meant to bring it, we do white out. Um, so we can have further direction. We're continually reviewing all of our platforms. To make sure the transition to go from dot com to dot gov is everywhere we are. Um, but knowing that dot com emails are still going to dot gov. Um, yes, I did share concerns um with President Wilcox when this came up. Our operating budgets were severely reduced on all. Line items and while fifteen dollars is not a lot of money um within that operation. I'm not sure how many departments actually utilize business cards. Cause some went to programming cards that they create in-house that may have the ability to change. So I will say that I mainly use my cards in the capacity as town clerk. For like probate referrals for attorneys for that kind of information, but. You know, I think there's a concern because of our operating budgets are were severely reduced. That studying that. Um, may not necess- be necessary for every department. So if it should go forward, I mean, I think. DAF is its problem if the motions directed appropriately. Um, maybe we could reach out and say that request who would like to purchase additional cards. Um, the last person, the tax assessor that came on board was the last person to do cards. But he even gives out like now QR codes and referrals when he's not in the office. So I don't even believe he's utilizing his. So I mean, I could look into see who utilizes a business card.
Yeah.
And report that back. Um, I didn't do that because you know, there wasn't a council motion to do so. But you know, there is concern about, you know, allocating that money in an already reduced budget.
Any further counsel discussion? Sure, go ahead. Dan?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to be labeled hypocrite here because you know, I had a, we had discussion previously about um DPW and signs. You know, to prevent additional fines, but there was, there was substantial money involved in that. I mean, there's a couple of questions here. This is on the agenda now. We don't have a, a town administrator. So we're gonna have to do this again in three months. What if we have department head leave? What if you have a change in the, in department? Are we gonna have to keep bringing business cards up in front of the town council every time? I mean, we do, we look at all of the expense reports. Sometimes we question some of the bigger items, some things that stand out. But we're not telling different departments, you can't go spend fifteen or twenty dollars. We're professionals here. They have a bottom line budget. They have to stay within it. Let them utilize the money as they see fit. If we as a council think that. Um, we should be better communicating and have car. I mean, that's different than specifying how they spend the money. I think my problem is this is micromanaging. I don't like doing it. So a question for the solicitor and administrator is if we vote no on this, does this prevent you from getting business cards?
Well, the motion was to enable them to do so if they see fit. Um, because I agree that it shouldn't have come before council, but. Um, when I sent a question like, hey, why, somebody recently got a card that said dot com and I was like, you know, what happened? And I was told that they couldn't afford it and I don't want anybody to feel like they're not enabled to afford what they need to afford. I completely agree with you. But as a council member, the only way, the only route that I have is to do this. So sorry that it's here. Um, sure, go ahead, counselor, Paul Machado.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna say, I, I um, I know the impetus was uh, and whether it was or not related to it, but there was a desire to fix a communication issue. Um, so applaud you for that. I think this is something that um, if we're asking our department heads to manage their budget. You know, that they should be looking at that to expend this if they need it, because they're in the best position to determine whether they need these or not. So I mean, I think although it was best intent, it would be something, uh, in my opinion, probably to file.
I agree with Counselor Madnick. They, the staff has a budget. They can choose how to use it. If they think they need new business cards, they can do it. Or they can do another way. And if they don't have the money to do it, they could come to us and say, hey. We need to, can we reallocate some money from another. Account to, to get business cards. So I think, again. They know how to manage their department and whether, whatever, however they're using to communicate. And as has been said, the dot com versus dot gov had nothing to do with the situation with uh, with that communication. So, oh, I, I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of this for the same reasons that Counselor Madnick stated. We're micromanaging. We should let them make their own decisions with the money in their budget.
That was my motion was to enable them to do so. If the council would rather me withdraw and do motion to file, I'll do so. Um, withdraw my motion, motion to file.
From a second.
Can I have a second to my motion to file?
Second.
Thank you. We'll go far, Wilcox, provided there's no other recognition. All right, Counselor Dintmore.
Yes.
Manic.
Yes.
Oh, Machado.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
And Wilcox, yes. Moving on, um, down to ordinances, chapter five point four, entertainment with authorization for the town clerk to hear um. Advertise for public hearing. Sorry, I was looking away. I have a lot of notes on these two. Um, so sorry, Counselor Reynolds, you'll have to deal with us a little longer. Um, but.
Wow.
I know, right? I know you're frustrated today. Um. So wait. Kick it off with some questions. I, actually, I asked this question to the town solicitor, but I'm gonna bring it up here for transparency. First thing that popped up to me was we are changing. I'm sorry, wrong one. We're changing where it says no person shall hold or conduct a music festival to business owners and people who hold a current municipal license. I was looking for clarity from the solicitor on what a municipal license was and he claimed to be that it was any other kind of like um liquor license or anything like that. So only people who hold those licenses would need to apply for an outdoor entertainment.
Yes, if I can give some background.
Yeah.
So um, these ordinances, indoor, public entertainment, outdoor, public entertainment were written. Um, I believe by the premise of entertainment started happening in establishments in town. That were outside of their normal purview, such as a restaurant was having. And if it was outdoor that required, you know, site plan, please detail those kind of things. And so many of our requests are, as you see on agendas, from current licensed holders. That have a vitaling, a liquor license. Um, however, we didn't want to limit to that, because they could have any license to apply. And so kind of the review is um done. With a way to review the business operation and all the public safety components that would go with the expansion of that use. What I don't believe that this initial ordinance was written for was events outside of that, um, i.e. The fair, i.e. we've had um previous outdoor events. At publicly owned properties that don't necessarily fit this package of current establishments. And so what we were trying to do is define what was entertainment. Because in the current ordinance, it just said as other entertainment. And that became kind of a vague thing as to direct businesses to what licenses they should be applying for. And so that is why um, the town solicitor, I, we looked at other applications in other towns. And proposed kind of the change for the event license. That would be different for those that, that are regularly licensed establishments. So I think those are the kind of the clear differences. So that helps. There are any other questions regarding that?
Okay.
Yes, so municipal, any current municipal license. So we have out there the general business license. That's, you know, coming from a registration. Um, we didn't want to limit it to any certain business. Because we want to make sure that, say, our bakeries or our um. I don't know, our retail stores that don't necessarily have a restaurant can have some sort of entertainment through a process. So that's why we said any other holders. Um, and special events are more geared towards. Very different operations such as live music or a band. Like our popular balloon festival that's coming up, um, that everybody's seeing. So reviewing that under the current entertainment ordinance was kind of restrictive. So we were trying to expand that to account for all these one offs and it wasn't really a great way of doing that. So that's why this, we kind of added this new structure, which is like brand new, just in draft. So the new special entertainment. Special event, I think.
Wait, which ones first?
Special event.
It just says entertainments five point four. So that is the, the outdoor entertainment, the existing one is first. But I know they go together. Um.
Yeah.
Which actually is my second point. Um, some of the definitions I found duplicative and I wasn't sure. It's unclear to me like who would need which license or permit. Um, for example, performances is listed in both concerts. Listed in both spectator focused event. I didn't really know the difference between that and athletic competition. Um, cause the. It just, they seemed the same to me, but the performances in concert were listed on both the outdoor entertainment and the special event. So what is the difference?
The difference is more, so for the example is you have an establishment in town. That has separate applicants for an event license, i.e. the balloon festival. They're not a current licensed owner, so um, and it's not the owner applying for outdoor entertainment. So we wanted to treat that. A little differently, because sometimes those operations aren't fully defined. We don't have, you know, every site plan for some of these kind of activities. Because they're different than a typical establishment where we already have some site plans. We already have, you know, the seating capacity. We know the parking based on their other permits. So I think.
Okay.
Pretty much kind of the difference is it's a land track that's not necessarily a licensed holder having events in town.
That makes sense to me. Anybody else have any questions they want to bring up in our team? Sure, go ahead, Mark.
So the, for the outdoor. The outdoor entertainment license, is that only businesses?
Under that, yes.
So.
Yeah.
So a private person does not need to get an outdoor entertainment license if they have music or?
Maybe a special event.
Well, i- if, if they're having it on their own property.
Yeah.
And then it, and then the way we define it is if you have more than a certain amount of people, or it's gonna impact safety services, police, traffic, those types.
Well, well, no, I'm, I'm talking, right now, I'm talking about. The outdoor entertainment license.
So if you.
Outdoor public entertainment. Is it limited to business owners? It does, because it's unclear to me whether it is or it isn't. That's why I'm asking.
Yes. In my, in my purview, it's limited to business owners. For non-business owners, if it's a private event, you need a sound permit in a different portion of the ordinance. However, if it's a public event and a non-business, then you would need this special event license.
I, I think that, so I, I would, I would say that within the outdoor public entertainment, it should be clearer that. It applies to businesses.
I had a similar point. Can we like put a pointer in five point four, four point oh one oh? That if you don't um meet this criteria as a rich, Richmond business owner that has municipal license. To go to this new ordinance. Entertainment, special events.
Ms. Zangari, is that something we can add to our?
Making notes on.
Yeah.
Sorry, it's kind of a play on his comment, but I had the same thing when I looked through this. Uh, in article one, section five point four, four point zero one oh license required. This is specific to Richmond business owners that hold a current municipal license. Could we put a pointer, the last line, that if you don't meet the criteria of those. First, of the first line, that you're pointed to this new special event ordinance. If not, you'll miss it.
I think that could be added, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I think because we had vetted different scenarios of how entertainments would be handled and better defined. We weren't sure if this, if the event, I know it's ahead of the agenda, but I think we're all talking about it together. If the special event would be something the council would wish to implement, so I think. That might make it clearer if council wants.
Mm-hmm.
Further, define a different criteria, or is there a better way? You define kind of outdoor entertainment, but I don't know. It's really, it's really outdoor entertainment. That does trump the additional oversight and needs for public safety. Noise and, and traffic and those kind of things, so. Entertainments are under one. We could just add another article. Under that provision of five four four entertainments. If you guys like the special event implementation.
Yeah, decide everything they want to add. Any questions? No, any further, oh, sure, go ahead, Mark.
Um, there's a definition in the outdoor entertainment. Uh, license section for what is outdoor public entertainment. So you define that term, but then you don't use that term anywhere in the, in the ordinance. So that needs to be uh, you figure it out. I'm sure there are places where it can go. Um.
Five four four, one, three, four, oh.
Yep. It should probably go at the very beginning, the first one. And maybe other places.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it, it said a question on, on how we're gonna implement this. So expected, so special, um, going on entertainment, special events, uh, special event. Does any organized outdoor indoor activity, festival, fair, concert, et cetera? Um, that could be conducted on private property but having offset impacts when you traffic noise, parking and crowd control. Supposed to track more than fifty people. Well, I've had seventy people in my house for Halloween party. All those people park on the street.
Are you on, I'm sorry to interrupt, are you on the entertainment and special licenses?
Entertainment, special events, which is within the same agenda.
No, well, I just want to make sure that I was at the same spot. They are separate, but um, that's, it says on town owned property. If you keep going, I had that same thought as, as you did, where it was limiting, but that limit is only for town owned property here.
Is conducted on private property.
Which section are you in then?
So if it doesn't say fifty persons, okay, so, so then that brings up another question is. Hi. Where, where does the line end? If it's on private property but having offsite impacts, again. I could, I could have an organized outdoor indoor activity in my house that has nu- numerous people with cars and vehicles. That takes up parking on the street and as long as there's no parking signs, any people can park anywhere. So would someone who's having a private event at their home have to go through this licensing process?
It, is that what you meant by like where it says conducted on private property but having offsite impacts?
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Because if it's, and that's right now, our entertainment is defined by public event. And then the sound permit in the zoning ordinance is trumped by a private event. We had someone who wanted to host a wedding at their, their home.
I remember that.
However, it impacted, you know, they, they wanted to have a band, you know, if you wanted to have a birthday party. Those things were never looked at until you have a hundred fifty plus cars trying to park in a way. So that was kind of, a lot of this was looked at, given that situation, to be honest. Because the private person had to advertise in a newspaper where the um, a public business. We just advertise um, online. And so there was a major cost associated with providing that cost. As well as there was a private party for a surprise birthday party for their spouse. And they had to put it in the paper because it was a private event that had a sound permit. Now, I will say that many people have private events that exceed fifty people on the regular. However, if they ask for what permits are required, we refer them to the sound permit currently. So I think we could probably better define that criteria based on public or private. But a lot of, you know, I'll say all the time, we don't want ordinances and ordinances are usually restrictive. Or because there's been an issue, right? And so coming up with a better defined ordinance that aids our businesses was kind of part of it. But two, trying to guide applicants that don't fit a mold has been really hard. And so I think we need to look at defining private event probably or on private proper, property. If it's a publicly invited event. And so the definition of a sound permit was like, are you advertising on social media? That you're having this event or are you sending it by invitation? So if it's in by invitation, we defined it as a private event.
How do you enforce that?
Yeah.
If someone has to see it. I mean, we're making, we're, we're making it more difficult for business to hold an event than we are for a private party. On someone's private property. But we're not making any, we're, we're, we don't really have any, any criteria for. Well, if someone has a hundred acres and they have a hundred people, you couldn't, couldn't even find one. But if someone has a half acre, like you, I get seventy people or someone else, I mean, you're gonna see that. But again, you could say, look, there's no, there's no parking issue because the town doesn't have no parking signs. Or ordinance that says you can't park on a public right of way unless you start putting the parking signs up. So you could argue, I don't need a special event license because there's nothing in ordinance or regulations. That says I can't park fifty cars on the street.
That's right.
Someone will complain, will be like, all right, you need to move the cars. They move their cars and it's over. That's it.
Right. And so what we also don't want to create is a loophole of saying this is a private event and they have a hundred acres. And they're having a music festival or they're having a food truck night. And they're not licensed with the town on anything because currently if they have a state food truck license. I mean, I think we're addressing some of that in the general business license. Changes that says every person must have a license, a municipal license. But I think the start of this, that didn't exist, because we had a business registration. So I think there definitely needs to be, I don't want it to be more restrictive on businesses than private property. But at the same time, we don't want to create something that's a way to loophole. The proper vetting for public safety, because again, like traffic, parking. You know, trash removal, sound detail. I mean, we have sometimes a strained, you know, police department. To have these things and they just pop up and the town knows nothing about it. And so.
I mean, the first assumption we're making is that people actually know there's an ordinance they have to follow, you know, license.
Go ahead, Mark.
Again, I'm just reading this, the definition of special event. It's, it's. An or statement, not an and statement. So if any of those apply, you must get this permit. And the third one, which is the broadest one, conducted on private property but having offsite impacts. Including traffic, noise, parking and crowd control. That could apply to every single birthday party in Richmond.
But.
Then, you're gonna make them get a million dollar, two million dollar insurance policy. I, I, I'm being facetious, but. That, that's, you know, that, that, to Counselor Madnick's point, we need to try to tailor it. I get trying to avoid who's gonna try to get around it and how do we avoid that? But you can't at the same time make every resident have to get a, a, a special event permit. For something that's not really a special event. Might be special to them, but not special to anybody else.
But I, I, I wanna, I wanna state that it's, it's clear that you made a good point about the hot air balloon festival. They're not a Richmond business. They don't have a business license. But they're holding their event on privately owned property. That does hold public events and it is a public event. And let's just, for talking purposes. If they were holding, what if the Washington County Fairgrounds didn't tell them, oh, by the way, you need to get a license? They would just hold their event and we'd be none the wiser. So I think there's, there's gotta be some honesty here that, that there are gonna be times where someone hosts an event and they didn't even know, I didn't even know I had a license. I just bought this property and I just want to do this and I, and I host it. And I don't think we want to shut things down like that. It's not what we're trying to do here. But it is for, you know, public safety and crowd control and those things. It's, but it's really hard to tailor this. To make it flexible enough to allow us to keep having these events in town, which I think we want. And to not constrain us to the point where people aren't able to do stuff on their property. And that's a tough balance and I just, I don't have an answer for that right now. We talked about this a bunch. We had, you know, fifty pages we went through, I don't know, six months ago. It, it's not an easy list and every town does it slightly different.
Definitely. On, um, you haven't gone yet. I already, already spoken, so let me up. I was gonna say, um, kind of dovetailing off what you had said and back to my initial question. So one ordinance is for business owners and one ordinance is for not. Like, my main concern when we're creating regulations is safety and traffic control and things like that. So why is it necessary information whether or not they're a business owner? Like, I just don't see like why we don't have different licenses for different purposes, regardless if you own a business or if you are a resident.
So some of the things like zoning determinations, that's the other thing is that outdoor public entertainment license is not a renewal. It is a new license under the current one every time. And so for new businesses that come into town and say they open up a restaurant and bar. And the zoning determination has happened and they've already gotten that zoning use determination for that. Then, you know, for businesses. We kind of have some kind of, to say, well, we already have a zoning determination on file. And as long as it's within that, I mean, an event's kind of something different. I guess it would, we're trying to streamline for businesses. And to accommodate for the offsets that aren't typical applicants. So I think there's a way, you know, back looking at this, is we could expand both outdoor public entertainment. And indoor public entertainments and redefine that. But the current version of both of those don't really meet kind of any of those needs, I guess. So without completely scrapping and further defining it. And we even looked at, do you define outdoor entertainment based on the zoning use scope? Cause that defines it. We had talked about that. So that's another way to do that. But a lot of this was brought up because there are certain criteria within this. That necess- isn't necessary for all businesses based on their operations. But it may be for some and there was no way of looking at some of that. And we could see a site layout, like that's an additional, because we already had some site layouts for a restaurant. Because we have to see how many tables they have or how many people they can see. Or for a liquor establishment, because we have to have a site la- layout again of where liquor is served. And where it's stored based in um, parking and those kind of definitions. But as far as some other things, like the example of the fairgrounds. There is no real site layout for each kind of different event that comes about. And so I guess it was a way to not put extra burden on business owners, owners. And make sure we're obtaining the information we need from those one-off events that are different than typically music at Richmond Smoke. Music at the preserve, those kind of things.
So it didn't fully an- answer my question, I don't think. Maybe it did. But why, if, if we just don't care who you are, whether you're a business owner or a person and a business comes in. You could still say, oh, we have this, we have that, we have that, right? I mean, I just, I, maybe I'm not understanding what the hang up is on separating the two.
Why couldn't you just base it on pro- the property instead of, I mean, you said zoning and use codes. That kind of bases on the property. So the higher, and I, we keep bringing this up, because it's a really good example. They don't own the property, but they're holding an event on the property and the property owner, I presume, is what told them, you need to go get this license. So isn't it the property owner's responsibility, even if the property owner doesn't have the business license? To make sure that they're um, that they're meeting whatever requirements the town has in place for different types of entertainment?
Well, it will be now for licensing, because we added that in the general sections of five oh four to make sure that it has owner's permission.
Right.
Um, and that wasn't, we always asked it, but there was no way to enforce that. So while I don't think people are having five thousand, you know, person, event advertised. On somebody else's property, we wanted to ensure that they were aware of the activities on the property. So that way, what they were applying to the council to wasn't misconstrued to what their lease agreement or kind of those things. So that is there now or will be once that provisions adopted.
So another.
It's not separated by entertainment.
Another big part of this is the, the public health and safety aspect, traffic, but also being respectful to neighbors. And a lot of these ordinances came from, someone had something on their property, a neighbor or a butter didn't know what's happening. It was a huge pain in the butt. It, it annoyed people and it was their lack of respect. And so we put these things into place. And I say we, I mean, government in general, like American culture. To try to. To try to. Limit the bad behavior. And. It's good that we're trying to streamline this. And I think we're, we're going in the right direction. I just. I just think. I I don't know how to put together yet.
Yeah.
And I think we're all having a struggle right now. How to do this the right way.
Thanks. Jim, you've been patient. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I think it was a special license. I was thinking of the while alone. Christmas light thing that was a company from out of town that come in to use a. Property. We treated that as a special license, right? There's a holiday license.
Outdoor entertainment.
Outdoor entertainment.
And. Was and while their current, they were current business owner, their operations for that had completed. Before this event. And so. Some of that. You know. Directing them for a license, they said, well, you know, it's, you know, we are open to the public and the public. Comes to us all the time, but we're open privately. And so, but it was like, no, the operation isn't existing now because, yeah, ground recreation and on the fifteen. So. A lot of these requests, and I think, you know, now I'm kind of looking at it in a different way, is that. There could be language put into outdoor entertainment or the requirements to say if currently on file. With your other license not required. But I want to make sure that the public knows the expectations of an ordinance, and then. That way we can come up with a accurate checklist. That we can make it easier for. The public business owners for us to produce. To say, this is required, if this is in play, it's not required if this is. Because there's a lot of gray areas and there's a lot of, um. Lot of. Things missing now than when this was written. So I think we could probably. Move special events into outdoor entertainment and further define requirements.
Yeah.
The just the second part, and I just, I want to be careful as far as the. Um. Ordinance regulations that we put on. The private. Property owner, like if you drove around this town at the time where Charahoe was graduating. My street, we had two parties at the same time on the street. Each of them had sixty people. I think there was a pony at one. I don't know. You couldn't drive down the street easily. You could get through there. Um. Nobody had a problem, right? And you you make it work. A lot of people either invite the neighbor or check with the neighbor. I think that's being neighborly. I just want to be careful. Because the, those neighbors are never even gonna go to some clerk base to look at an ordinance. They're not gonna call. They're just gonna do it. So. If they do that, then what happens? Do we deploy the zoning official to there? I mean, who goes and enforces this anyway? Like, how does that actually happen? We have a.
Likely on Saturday too.
Right, right, we have a. Maybe we don't have a full-time zoning official, right? So, um, and a lot of times it's subjective. Uh, I don't like that neighbor, so I wanna, I wanna, you know, so I want to be careful about that because we live in a rural community. I think it's important on the businesses side, but on the, the community side, I just want to be careful.
Yeah. Agreed. And shifting just away from requirements onto the definitions of a special event. Um. Some of them were a little broad, where as Mark said, they could come in for a birthday, or. As Jim said, it could come in for a graduation, where just a special event means any organized indoor, outdoor activity. I don't, that's anything, like literally. So as we go into the next steps, we're just going to. Tighten these up. I guess, um. I also. I had a question about. Activity on town owned property, because another item that we had discussed through all this is creating a special policy for out, um. Activity on town owned property. I don't want to have to see somebody get two different permission slips for one event. Um. So I just want to make sure that if somebody's getting a special event permit, then they wouldn't need to. Get any kind of permission under that other policy. But I guess when that policy comes up, we'll see it then. But that was another concern I had. Um, I do have somebody from the public, anybody from council wants to say something?
All right, I'm going to public. Go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Chris Kona of Richmond. Um, and I'm struck by Council Maddox's point, which. You made a little ago that talked about what are the real, what are the things that we're trying to prevent that's annoying? Particularly, I think, when you're talking about like on private property, the things you want to do there. The idea that there are certain actions like parking on the street. Or if there's too much parking on the street, like if that's the problem that's in the neighborhood, then that's a thing that you may want to manage because that's the safety risk. If it's an ordinance thing, if it's a sound thing, then creating sound ordinances in certain in neighborhoods, so they know like during period, period, period of time. But I I do think, especially as you start talking about the birthday parties and Halloween parties, that you get into this hazy ground. And it's almost easier where if you just highlight the couple of things that you're trying to achieve with those, instead of trying to have. A license to manage all those things. Then it's, it may be more streamlined for the persons there once a day. I kind of understand the business license thing. And if there's a need to create business licenses in order to be able to manage. Something that's happening regularly and have a discussion with the town and. I may see a purpose for that, but I think that, especially as you start talking about a separate. Uh, public property license, which could have its own or a public property request. Then now you've, at this point, you've kind of boxed into everything, where the only thing in the middle left is the thing I could do in my backyard. Which is maybe something that's still left as a thing you can do in the back there. So I I don't know. I offer that as food for thought, but I think. The Council Maddox's point about what are the things that you're really trying to focus on? And as a way to manage public good, maybe a way to to handle that special event permit.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you. Aaron, you have something?
Just when this was brought up, it was never the intent to manage any private entity. I mean. I did bring up the sound permit, but that was kind of vetted out. To deal with some of those things. But as I'm looking at this. It might make more sense for. The town solicitor and I to look at some of these definitions that are in special event. And the standards of approval. And some of the requirements and just add those to outdoor and indoor entertainment, because I think that was the whole premise of. Is further defining what is required if you're holding those things, because. The largest, the reason why there's licensing is because it is. Something that wants to make sure that we're not impeding on people's enjoyment of their yards. And so establishments. Um, and sometimes the sound ordinance and decibels does not fit. Is even more limiting, because if you look at it like basically. A leaf blower. Can't really be operated in most areas of town if you're going by decibel. So. And that's not really a clear way of administering. Kind of those safety, noise and health concerns. So. I think if we could. Take another stab at it and add some of that criteria in the special event and further define. Those I think will be, have a better draft.
How would you, how would you feel about? On special, on the special event license? Uh, we could, we could just delete the part about private property and then you could just leave it to. If someone's got a big party and they're making a lot of noise, you have the noise ordinance, you have nuisance, the police enforce. Kind of a lot of towns and the chief could probably, you know, if someone's having a wedding. In the, in their backyard, it happens in my neighborhood, and it gets too loud, someone will invariably call the police and say it's eleven o'clock. It's too loud, the band is playing, the police come, say, shut it down. It's shut down. You can let it play out as it does organically in a lot of places. You know. It doesn't have to be in there. We could remove that. And then it's just for the businesses. That are having bands or other performances.
Go ahead, Mark.
I I would, I agree with that, but I would consider increasing the, um, the numbers. I mean, fifty is not a lot of people. Twenty-five cars, you know, or especially if you can, if you. We're now talking about businesses. It could be every. Hopefully for them, it's every day. Um, but so I I think. You know, it's. The 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 intention is good. I just think we need to be careful that we don't make it so broad that it's overly. Burnt some on people that we don't want.
Hey, Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I I want to make a motion to go past nine P M in case we do.
Thank you for keeping your eye on the clock. I'll second it. Any council discussion? All right, we'll vote, Councilor Dinsmore.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Tomashano.
Yes.
No, we can finish this by nine o'clock.
I'm voting yes, sorry. Um, we'll see if you win. We'll see. Let's get, let's get it going. So. So on on that, I'm gonna say, um, does any other councillors have any new items to bring up about this before we set it back for them? Sure, go ahead, Dan.
I I just want to bring this back to the original discussion that we had as a body. And that came up through, we talked about codifying ordinances, making our town run more efficiently. This was something that. Um, came up as. The way that the ordinance is written is very confusing. It's very difficult for. Um. Private property owners, for business owners, for. You know. All all of the above and our staff to handle this when it gets, when it comes in. That the first thing that we tried to attack was this, and it's it's been months, everyone's been working hard on it. But the original goal. Was to streamline it. So when someone wants to hold an event. That is going to be publicly advertised, so the public is aware that it's happening. There's no surprises. That it's streamlined, it's efficient. That was, I just want to bring it back, that that was the original goal to this. I think we're getting close. We've narrowed it way down. Um. And I I. I think we're we're getting there, but I just wanted to make it clear that when the original goal is to streamline the way that the town operates, make it more efficient. And to make it more clear to business entities and non-business entities. What the expectations are.
Right.
So we're getting there.
Anybody have anything new about the ordinances? Um, so Aaron and our solicitor, do you feel like your direction's been clear on next steps?